So we're all here now if you want to start.
Morning, everybody. Sorry I'm late.
Oh, that's okay. All right, we're all set here. It is 9:30 and do we have additional Facebook followers this morning?
We have two people signed in, yes.
Oh, good. Well, good morning to those individuals. We'll call the meeting to order at 9:31. 9:32.
Yeah.
On the adoption of the agenda recommendation that West Algen Council Committee of the whole adopt the agenda circulated, a mover and securer. Moved by Rowe, seconded by Talia, all favor. That is carried. Certainly a reminder to disclose any pecuniary interest.
Here's the chair.
Yes?
I already submitted a conflict of interest. I have two areas of conflict of interest under section 5.1 and section 5.9. Both of those areas are conflict of interest and have been noted on the conflict form.
5.1 and 5.9.
Under Council France, related to Aldborough Public School and Westmore and Optimists.
Okay.
Yes. I'm on the parent council at Alderborough Public School and we've already made a donation towards what they're asking. So I feel I might have a conflict of interest being in two parts of it.
Okay.
I'll send you a form then, Richard.
So noted.
Okay.
Anything? Okay, that is. Moving on, Magna. Your second presentation of the 2021 draft budget.
And I have a, can I ask a quick question? So having heard those conflict declarations, when I looked at these, I looked at them from the perspective of, not that I was a member of something, but that they affected the community as a whole or a larger group. So if being a member or having a grandchild in the school or being a member of one of the groups is a conflict, then I guess I have to declare those two, although it seems very remote to me.
Bonnie, you don't have to. I would say being a member is not it. Angela does receive financial or does work for both for two different places, so therefore she has to. She works for Thames Valley School Board and does work for the Optimists, which means she incurs pecuniary relationships. Richard, I honestly don't believe Richard needs to, but that's his choice. So it's your choice, Bonnie.
But the only reason that I did that is because the Parent Teachers Association made a donation towards the sign, which I'm part of, and then I'm also, you want one, they want one from council. And so I've got two fingers in the pie and I don't mind a little bit, but you know, if you think I'm okay, I'll go ahead with it.
Well, I don't, I don't think you have any direct benefit, but I mean, you'd have to do what you're comfortable with. And is that kind of the way you see it, Jenna?
Yeah, it's if you do, there is a chance that it could financially affect you as a person or a member of your direct family. Then that's when you have to declare the pecuniary interest. Richard, if you want to just declare a general conflict, that's your choice because you've already supported donating to it once before. I can understand that as an idea that you, not a pecuniary interest, but a conflict of interest. It's slightly different.
Okay, that's the way I would go there.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not going to declare any conflicts then.
Yeah, I don't see, because your grandkids go to school, I don't see there's a.
No.
Okay.
So I'm going to share this power, the PowerPoint, Magna, then?
Yes, please.
Can everybody see what I, see my screen?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, mine's gone off unfortunately, but anyway, carry on.
Oh, you can't see it again, Richard?
No.
Wonder if it's your actual Chromebook then?
I, I did talk to Cecil this morning, Richard, about your laptop and he thinks it's the laptop that is not taking the high resolution and the size of the screen, basically.
I might have to, I might have to get another one some time. Hang on, I'm gonna.
I did send it to you as a PDF as well this morning.
Okay, then I'll get it on my small iPad, okay?
Okay.
Carry on.
Okay, so this is the second committee of the whole meeting. 2021 Budget Deliberations. Can you move to the next slide, Jenna? So this slide, basically, I put together highlights of our previous meeting that took place on January 21st. So I sorted it by department. So Administration, Council inquired about Ontario Invests grant that we have received back in 2019. It's, it was about improving service delivery and efficiency. It was, so that grant is unconditional. It was one-time grant funding contribution that we have received from provincial government. And there is no deadline to use these funds. We're going to talk about it, about this grant funding a little bit later in my presentation. We have also discussed security cameras. Council noticed that they were removed from our capital budget. However, we are still thinking of do proper wiring when we're doing office renovations. So we, in, down the road, if we decide to put security cameras in our office, we'll have that possibility. We have also discussed the possibility of using our service delivery money towards equipment purchased, replacement of the computers, servers, all IT-related equipment. So I'm going to need Council's input on that. And the Fire Department also has asked to bring an apparatus and equipment replacement schedule. We've quickly reviewed possible, possibility of having medical screening program, which that option will be presented to Council for future budget considerations. We decided to look for savings in operating budget and lower transfer to reserves. And Council expressed interest in considering reviewing the fire master plan. Under Parks and Recreation, there was some inquiry about Dog Park, which was not included in 2021 budget. Balance and reserves as of December 31st, 2021 is estimated to be at $28,788. We've also discussed capital for new road reconstruction. There were some inquiries about electrical charging stations and private drain connections and benches for downtown core. Those are all included in our capital spending. Capital for Westmore and sewage, there was some areas about the workstation, WPCP, in the amount of $40,000. So that's the purchase and installation of new SCADA system for Rodney Sewage. In the past, Westmore and Sewage supported both plans, Rodney and Westmore. But with recent changes and refurbishment that was done at the Westmore and Sewage, there were some modifications done by RV Anderson. So now Westmore's SCADA system is a standalone system. And Rodney Sewage will need pretty much the same setup as Westmore. For 2021 events, Canada Day, Civic Holiday, Christmas Parade, et cetera, funds are still allocated as in previous years. So we decided to keep the funding until as times are uncertain and, you know, down the road, we're going to decide whether we're going to move on with these programs or not. And now I'd like to pass it on to Jenna to go through council grants.
So council grants were submitted, all had to be submitted by the end of December, by December 31st, 2020. So just so you know, some of these maybe seem a little strange, but it was before the latest lockdowns and changes. They all had to submit them. So we got a submit from Alderborough. I did it alphabetically. It was just easier for me. For Alderborough Public School, they've requested $15,000 towards the purchase of their sign. These are all ones we will deliberate, but I just want to go through them quickly. Eagle Community Center, they need some major foundation repairs. They've requested $10,000. Rodney Agricultural Society, you'll notice there's only three because we have an agreement to support them in many other ways. So I didn't bother including those in the charts. They are included in their requests. But I went through it with their treasurer and this is the way, it just made more sense. So you actually knew the extras they were asking for on top of their normal or on top of what was already agreed to be given to them, but she wanted to make sure she pointed that out to all of you ahead of time. Tiny Tots, there is a request for waiver of rental fees. This is up in the air because of COVID restrictions. They don't know. But again, she submitted because it was supposed to. Triconal Heritage, which is back as Page House. The Horticultural Society, there you'll see in their submissions, they also included the hanging baskets and extra things. We did again discuss the idea that we've already budgeted for that. It didn't need to be submitted. So their president was quite happy with me laying it out this way. I went through it with him first before I did this. West Algen Legion, they just really want the continuation of money promised to them last year, but they were unable to use due to COVID-19, so they just submitted a letter. The Westmore and Optimists basically wanted a continuation of the same in hopes that they can run events. So that's pretty much it for, oh, and the, sorry, the Westmore and Mom Bowling Club. So that's where we got the total of the 48,000. Magna did add some extra money in for one-offs and things that are needed at individual requests that come at different times. And you'll remember, we waived the fees for everybody, they have to add, they have to submit a form, but otherwise for pre-approved groups to use our recreation center and other facilities, which is why there aren't a lot of in-kind requests this time. Okay, Magna?
So, so now while we're at this, does Council wishes to go through grant requests item by item? Or would you like me to move on with the rest of the presentation? What would you like us to do?
Well, it's your pleasure.
Well. I can, I would prefer to go through them later. You can go ahead with your presentation from my perspective, anyway.
Just, just going back to that previous slide, Magna. Now your, your tax levy, if I correct that, that is set by the county?
No, no, Mr. Mayor. So the tax levy is the amount of money collected through taxes. If you look at our summary sheet on our main page of, of the budget, that 3.69 million dollars, that's our tax levy. If converted to tax levy increase, this is the amount, the actual budgeted amount, the difference between tax, budgeted amount from the actual amount collected. So when you look at the 5% levy increase, that's where you will see it. It's from budget amount, it's between budgeted amount and actual collected. And I was going to go through a terminology, so Council, I want to make sure that Council understands tax, the difference between tax levy and tax rate. So just like, so is everybody okay with tax levy now and understands that? So I can move to the tax rate. So 2021 draft budget proposed, proposes an increase in municipal portions of the property tax rate of 2.58%. So tax rate is how the levy is distributed among the assessed properties. So that's, that's the increase the property owners will see on their tax bill. 2.5%.
And how many different tax classes are there? There's residential, farm.
Oh, there's about 15.
Right.
There's residential, industrial, farmlands.
He's, he's at the point, the county sets the mill rate, right? Those levies, that's what I think he's asking, Magna?
So the county rate is, when, when you look on your tax bill, you'll see three categories on your tax bill. There is a municipal rate, county rate, and there's education rate.
Right.
We're just talking about municipal rate. So I just want to make sure that Council understands that. So that 2.58% increase relates only to the municipal portion, as we have no control over county and education.
Magna, does the levy include the complete rate?
I'm sorry, I did not hear you.
Does the levy include the complete rate? So the county and the ministry rate for education?
No, no, the levy, the levy that you see on summary page only relates to the municipal portion. We're not including county. You don't see county portion on our financial statements. We're just third party, we're just collecting the property taxes and we have to remit them back to the county.
So the 5% levy could very well be higher when you add the county rate and the education rate for residents?
Yeah.
See, it hasn't been yet. Well, but, yes, yes, in theory, yes, but it's, but it, we cannot put it on our financials, like it's not part of our levy.
So it's not part of our levy, but just for my thinking purposes, that levy could very well, residents' overall bookkeeping be higher because it's not a full picture.
That's correct, yes, yes. So let's say if county rate increases at 2%, and, you know, going to be another 2% increase. And between county and us, the proportionate, like it would probably be the same. So if the property owner is looking at $20 increase on their tax bill, the county portion is going to be another $20.
But the operative part of what we have control over is the, is the tax, the tax rate increases, the thing that, that we have to keep focused on?
That's correct. So I prepared calculation for Council. As this year is very unusual year for our municipality. As a 2.58% increase on, in tax increase is to affect everybody differently. Each property owner will be affected by different increase. And the reason for it is because of the special rate that is going in 2021. Special rate was charged for garbage collection. And in previous years, only in-town residents were charged that rate. So as you can see, with 2.58% increase for this year, our residential class in town in Westmore will be getting, will be paying less tax, $103.73 less of what they paid in 2020. So as you can see, that 2.58 increase is not really affecting them because of the special rate that they paid in previous years. For residents in Rodney, in-town residents that had special, that had garbage collections on their tax bill, they're looking at $149.30 decrease in their taxes in 2021. And rural residential, the property owners that have been added back in August with, for garbage collection, they were charged $50 on their tax bill extra. They'll be getting, their taxes will be reduced by $19.60 for 2021. So as you can see, the people, the property owners that have been affected by garbage collection, they're not getting any increase on the tax bill. As a matter of fact, they're getting significant decrease on their taxes. The only classes that will be getting true 2.58% increase is the farmland, industrial class rates, managed forest, and the rest of the classes.
Okay, everybody understand what Magna just relayed to us? Any questions for Magna on that?
Magna, do you have a breakdown for commercial? I don't see that.
No, I didn't. Commercial is being, well, a commission is a little bit different. All the commercial properties that had, that were part of garbage collections in previous years that had garbage collections, they will also see a decrease on their tax bill. The ones that did not have garbage collection, then they will see a slight increase on their taxes. However, what I can do, I can provide Council report on the increase for all the property classes, if that's what you would like me to do. I just focused on, on the major properties in, in West Algen.
Yeah, that's the big majority of the people that are going to be affected the most. So if you would like a complete breakdown, I don't think it would be too big a deal for you to prepare that, Magna?
No, no.
Okay, why don't, why don't you go ahead and do that? And then we'll, then we've got a clear understanding how it affects all properties.
Okay, and so you know, so this calculation was based on $200,000 property value. So if, so farmlands, best example, if there is a problem, a farmland are as values at $400,000, their increase will double. So they're looking at $14 increase on their tax bill.
Sir, Teresa has raised her hand.
Go ahead.
Yeah, through the chair, I just want to clarify, the 200,000 property value that you estimated it on is through an N cap value, which is lower than the market value. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, next slide.
So the next slide, basically, so that verbiage I took out of Ontario Invests program and funding that we have received in 2019 over, over half a million dollars. So some Ontario small and rural municipalities may have limited capacity to plan, modernize and improve the way they provide services to their communities. With this funding, municipalities can improve service delivery by finding smarter, more efficient ways to spend the money that help those who need it most while respecting taxpayers' dollars. Examples could include service delivery reviews, development of shared services agreements, IT solutions, capital investments, or other projects. Municipalities will decide how to best target funding to benefit their local communities. So as of January 1st, 2021, we have 500, almost $512,000 left. Jenna, could you go to the next slide? $512,000 in that efficiency grant funding. We have decided to use that money towards asset management, strategic planning, keyless access control, and electronic timekeeper, conferencing equipment, laser fish software, and two electronic signs. Leaving us with the balance in that account in the amount of $164,000. I strongly recommend that Council decides where that money should be allocated. As just on a few days ago, there was a new funding announced for small and rural Ontario municipalities. This announcement was made on January 26th and it's a phase two to the initial Ontario Invests program. This one is called municipal modernization. And deadline to apply for that grant is March 15th, where the province is contributing between $20,000 to $250,000. Eligible costs are fee for service cost, software licenses, systems development, and training. One of the determining factors of our eligibility is the full allocation of Ontario Invest funds and reporting to the province on the future plans. So unless we allocate the, the entire grant funding to future projects, we are unable to apply for this grant. That's why I want to bring that to Council's attention. And I would like to take advantage of, of the other as there we have. As you know, we have completed organizational review last year. There, they, that organizational view outlined a lot of efficiencies and improvements in our municipal office. And so modernization grant, if we apply, will be very helpful to, to move on with the changes and, and find additional efficiencies in our municipality.
Hey, everybody comfortable with Meg's recommendation?
Bonnie has her hand up, sir.
Yes, okay. Go ahead, Bonnie.
So this list, do you, are you recommending that the balance be also allotted in this budget? Is that what you're recommending? And do you have some suggestions for that?
It doesn't have to be done today, but before we approve this 2021 budget or perhaps, well, deadline to apply is March 15th. So perhaps by the end of February, have, we should have all the projects allocated with these funds. So meant for funding.
Everybody happy with this? Are your questions answered?
Yeah, seems to make sense.
I see no more, sir.
Next, next slide then.
Okay, so next slide is 2021 draft budget revisions. So it was not a lot of revisions that I had to make. However, it was important for Council to reduce the tax rate by at least 1%. For transfers to and from reserves, I added I added additional $50,000 to, towards the connectivity project. I also offset municipal insurance increases by transfers from reserves of $20,000. We have, we have insurance reserves. There was, there's, the money was allocated in prior years towards actually unexpected increases. And I also reduced fire department transfers to reserves by $50,000. Can we go to the next slide? As for individual departments, I, there was a cloud permit software that council approved at the end of 2020. And it was omitted from the budget, so I added it. It's $6,780 under building inspection. Under roads, I added $50,000 additional cost for brine. As we're expecting significant increase from the suppliers. For transit, in transit, I added $3,000 to cover costs related to joint agreement. And under parks and recreation, I, if things are the same as they were last year, I am recommending pool closure as it doesn't make financial sense to keep the pool open. And we'll go through pool financials. Actually, we're going to go through the pool financials right now. So first column, option one is to keep the pool open as normal. As you can see, operating expenses, pool operating expenses are $113,000, almost $114,000. This is what the pool is going to cost us this year to operate. For option two, I decided to eliminate items or costs or expenses directly associated with the pool closure. So I eliminated revenue, wages of, of the lifeguards, training expense. As, as you know, none of the lifeguards are certified. And in order for us to run the pool, we would have to certify them in-house. That would, that is going to cost us additional $5,000. Wages transfer in, those are the wages of our operators helping with maintaining the pool. That number, if we decide not to open the pool, will be probably lower as their visits to the pool will decrease significantly. It is hard to determine what our hydro, gas and water bills are going to be. They're not going to be as much as we initially budgeted for 2021. I assume there will be no gas or very minimal gas bills as the pool will not need to be heated. And water costs will be significantly lower. As for hydro, the pumps will still have to run. But at this point, it is hard to determine. For building repairs and maintenance, I decided to leave $5,000 in the budget as, you know, this might be a perfect opportunity for us to perhaps maybe fix the building a little bit and replace wearing tear items on the building and inside the building itself. As for pool maintenance, again, I'm not sure how much that is going to cost us. The same with pool chemicals, we will need to add some chemicals into the pool, even though if we're not using. However, in terms of cost, I cannot determine that. And, and for us, in order to open the pool this year, we have to repair the liner and that's a significant expenditure. We have budgeted $15,000. So basically, we cannot open the pool unless we fix the liner. So if you, as you can see, there is significant savings of at least $60,000 if we decide not to open the pool this year. And the next slide is the public attendance at the pool. So we took July and August. As you can see, so first column total attendance, we had 995 people attending the pool in July. On average per day for open swim, we had nine adults swim. We had two people per day. Family swim, we had six per day and aquafit attendance, eight people per day. So those are the numbers and in August, numbers usually typically the numbers decrease as the weather is cooler. And so open swim, again, we had seven people attending the pool per day. Adult swim, two. Family swim, seven and aquafit, seven. For the total of 25 people a day. So those are the options that council will need to consider when, when we're before we approve the budget.
Any comments on that from council?
Through the chair, Jana or Magna, can you just refresh my memory on the total number of residents in West Elgin?
4,995.
Thank you.
Bonnie?
Yeah, a statistic that I would find interesting is how many individual persons use the pool. So, so yes, your, your slide showed the number per day, but likely, you know, the, the number of people over the course of the month would be less than those daily amounts. Those weren't different people. It was the same people. So, so that statistic would be of interest to me. I wondered also, I mean, this is a very disappointing consideration for me particularly, given that this was one of the few recreational activities last summer that we were able to offer because of the pandemic. And, you know, every indication is this summer is going to be very similar. Is there a possibility of us budgeting for open and then deciding, you know, within the next month to six weeks, whether we're going to actually open or not? And any savings could be considered for a reserve for the pool, which from my understanding, there isn't a reserve in the pool. That would be my thoughts or questions.
Well, the only option at this point, since if council cannot make the decision today or before the end of February or March, I would suggest that to offset the cost, the money would need to come from tax rate stabilization.
Because from my perspective, the 50,000 savings we're talking about here is essentially the, the one mill rate or the one tax rate improvement that we've made. And I hate to think about the fact that services for, you know, children primarily and others in our community is going to be the way that we find this savings.
Angela has her hand up.
Yeah, go ahead, Angela.
I have two questions. Can we use the money from the Ontario Invest to repair the liner? And if we decide to close the pool, is it possible to use the transit bus system to help get residents down to the lake as have access to that type of recreation?
Well, I guess was first of all specialized transit, just like the name. It's for, it's a specialized transit and it's for seniors and people with disability. I guess as long as it doesn't impact services for the people with needs, I don't see why we cannot utilize this type of service for the rest of the public.
However, there is a limit of only four people on the bus.
That's right. So you have to take that into consideration. As far as the pool, I mean, if we could run regular programming, and there will be no questions in my mind in terms of, you know, like, I wouldn't even consider of closing the pool. But we, this year, the same as last year, we're very limited. We are limited of what programming we can offer at the pool and, and how many people we can allow for, for a swim. It's just, it doesn't make financial sense to leave open this year during pandemic.
I, I understand what you're saying and that I don't foresee the current restrictions changing anytime soon based on what I'm seeing in the media. And I, I get what you're saying and I'm disappointed in that. And my mind is going to try and think of alternatives that we could provide some type of recreation activities or ways to get to the lake that we have. One way or another, the liner has to be repaired if you're going to open that pool back up and when the pandemic is over. So I wondered if we could use the Ontario Invest money towards repairing the liner this year, should we decide to leave the pool closed? And think outside the box of, I don't know, just off the top of my head, quick, you know, Tuesdays and Thursdays, we try and work with the transit system committee to, to schedule alternative means to get residents that don't have access to transportation to the lake that we currently have. This is just, I didn't see your presentation until this morning. So I'm just, you know, trying to think quickly and, you know, have this discussion.
What, what are other jurisdictions doing? Has anybody done any research as to what Dutton Dunwich is intending on their pool for working through this pandemic? And I think Magna is absolutely correct. If it was normal times, we wouldn't even be having this discussion. But this is again, much like the arena, depending on what happens with the, with the restrictions will determine whether the ice is going to stay in the arena or not. So I think that we unfortunately, because of the situation that we're in, have to look at things a little bit different than we normally would. Richard?
Yeah, unfortunately, I've got a blank screen again, so I just tried my hand. But yeah, I, I think we, I personally think we should go along and, and fix the liner just in case. And, and then it is ready for the future, whether it be this year or next year. It still has to be done. So I think that way we're, we're ready for anything that comes our way.
Oh, sorry, sir, to answer your question, Dutton Dunwich right now is waiting to find out if they get a grant because they have some major capital repairs they need to do on their pool. So they have not determined whether they will open or not. And in reading Meg's PowerPoint slide, I think, maybe you would be the best to answer this. They could use some of that Ontario Invest money to fix the liner because it does say capital investments, but I'm not positive.
Yeah, sorry.
Teresa, you got a question?
Yes, through the chair. So disappointing once again, what's going on with our pool? And first question, who raised the money for a pool? Was our local people and then us and a grant, then municipality grant? Or who was the initial capitalization to the pool?
Oh God, you're testing my memory now. That goes back a long ways.
Yeah, it's before my time. That's why I'm asking. And then secondly, area pools, last year, there weren't open. Dutton Dunwich wasn't open and due to the pandemic and the capital things they had to fix. And as well, was Glencoe open? Ridgeton was not? Who around us was open last year during the pandemic? Do we know that information?
Glencoe was open. They did limited services, limited hours. They did try to do swimming lessons. They have no idea what they're doing next year. They haven't identified yet.
I'm also worried that with so many pools closed and even in the greater areas, I don't know how we're going to get lifeguards again. I just saw that training piece and Magna's slide there. Because if the pools aren't open, the kids aren't getting the swimming lessons and then they can't get their training in and they can't get their lifeguarding in. So it's just going to be a domino effect from here on out is what I'm a little worried about there. I know kids catch up on things and such, and if they're already very keen on swimming, they'll, they'll go ahead and do that. But how many are going to go back to the water? How many in our ever
There are just There are just so many
Many facets?
There are so many unanswered questions here that it's very difficult because, you know, it's not so much, certainly, I think that we can find the resources to, to open the pool, but we need to have the staff and to have the staff, we got to get advertised. We got to do interviews. We got to get people hired. And then if it becomes, you know, if we get into another stay at home lockdown like this, then what do we do with staff? That's Bonnie.
I seem to remember some years ago that Four Counties Transit did have a, a trial of having others besides seniors and those with disabilities use the, the van, specifically people without transportation to get to appointments or work even. So I do think that likely the Four Counties Transit would be open to, to offering a couple of times a week trips for children to go to the lakes, ensuring that they have an adult with them and all of that sort of thing. But I, I do think that's something that we could, could pursue as an option for those that can't drive to the lake.
I'm dating myself, but I can remember when school buses were used to bring children to the Rodney Pool from over in Orford Township from Highgate and area. So that was before the influx of people's backyard pools.
I think there was even a trial with the Four Counties doing a pickup in West Lauren to go to Rodney to the pool. I seem to recall that in the past, so.
So the recreation would have to pay for the usage of the Four Counties bus. So there'd be a cost associated with that also.
Correct.
Angela?
Again, I go back to that Ontario grant. There's money allowed in that and we're trying to improve service delivery in changing times. That grant was a year ago and a lot of things have changed. I don't remember what the specifications were in that. But it could be, without putting money into the taxes, allow some of that and just kind of, you know, allow money to fix the liner and take the money for the pool out of the budget, which would solve our big dilemma with the tax increase. And then think outside the box to help promote local tourism and get them down to Fort Glasgow. It's something that I would be willing to explore and lean towards this year. I realized there's only four people that can go in the bus. So it would involve multiple back and forth trips. It might be worthwhile and it gets people out and about and into nature, which is a good It might be worthwhile and it gets people out and about and into nature, which is a good thing to do.
What is the current rate per trip for bus?
It's six dollars.
Twelve round trip.
Your hand up too.
Truss?
Go ahead and finish your thought if you have something going on there, Duncan.
I'm just, is it the intention that our the residents pay for the bus or is it a intention that the municipality provide the bus?
My thought, my thought through the chair would be that we could do some sort of subsidized. I I don't think it's a good idea to to give anything. I think it's a good idea to subsidize things and we do have some space in our council granting, which could be the the location of those those funds too. The one question that I had was for Lee. I didn't know whether the pool liner could be repaired without spending a lot of money on on actually opening the pool itself to do that.
The pool liner can't, we have to open the pool, we physically have to take the cover off, drain the water out down so that it's below the shallow end so that they can make the seam repairs. And then we would have to put water back in. Opening the pool, we can't leave the pool closed, even we would have to. When we say open the pool, we mean hooking up all of the piping, adding chemical, the pump would have to circulate and run. We couldn't leave the pool closed all summer. We'd have a green pond. So the pool has to be opened regardless of whether we use it or not.
So adding the pool repair would be just essentially the cost of the liner.
Yeah, it would be actually, it would be the cost of the actual repair itself.
Okay.
Also, get you in there now.
Through the chair, I was just wondering. Going back to the transportation, Magda, would it affect our insurance at all to use it for that extra use for the residents? To have them go down to, is it just covered for any transportation or is it specific to say appointments? I'm just wondering if there's any fine print in our insurance for use of the transit?
Yeah, there is no limit on our insurance. We would definitely be covered under our current insurance. Just one more thing, I'd like to refer back to what Councilor Kmart mentioned about utilizing our in Ontario Invest grant. I am not sure if we'll be able to apply that money against that grant as the strictly specifies and focuses on efficiencies. And pool liner is just the regular wear and tear item. I mean, it's it's not, it's not an improvement. So I I just, I don't think we can offset that cost through the grants.
Okay, what what's your pleasure to move forward with this? Do you want to mull this around in your head for a little bit or do you want to make a decision today? Art fast whether we open or or mothball the pool for the 2021 season? I think that's the decision, Bonnie.
I guess one more question is, is staff thinking that the limitations for use of the pool are going to be more strict than last year?
I'm not sure if they're going to be more strict than last year. They're probably going to be the same.
I know it's pretty hard to look at the future, but.
Richard?
Yeah, a question for Magna through the chair. Magna, when you did, when you looked at the tax rate at 2.58, did you take into account the pool being open or the pool being closed?
I took into the account that the pool will be closed. That that's the only way we could drop that tax rate down to 2.58% from 3.79.
Yeah, because yeah, there's two percent there, right? But like, yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, I just wondered if you'd taken that into account. Thank you.
Which leads me to one more question. Now, Magda, by taking the the reducing the the amount of money put into the pool this year, how does that affect next year's when we sit down to do our budget for next year? Is that money that we'll have to find to to put that back into the pot?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. The presentation, if you go back, Jenna, if you could show on the screen that calculation of how the increase is affecting different property, that would be slide slide 11. So if council looks at this slide, as you can see, most of our residents will be paying less taxes this year. I mean, nothing comes free and you know, I mean, if we're offering our residents decrease on their taxes. I mean, we, they need to understand that we're, we cannot offer the same kind of programming and the same kind of services as in the previous years. And there is so much we can pull out of reserves. I don't recommend pulling more money out of reserves as you know, we have capital projects that have been deferred for two or three years. We're going to come to the point where, you know, things will fall, start falling apart and we won't be able to keep up.
Well, I I think the money that we pulled, most of the money we pulled out of reserves this year has been for projects that are earmarked that those reserves were set aside set aside for, which is is what those reserves are. I I agree with you to to offset operational costs by pulling money out of reserves is not doing anybody any favor if it's just taking the money out of reserves to lower the tax rate to you know, make us look good. I think we have to be physically responsible and and apply the money where it was meant to be applied for and not to just try to make things look better than they really are because that that will come back and bite you somewhere really hard.
Sir, Angela has her hand raised.
Yes, Angela.
One quick question to go back to the pool. Lee, you said the pool has to be open in order to do because otherwise it would be a big green pond this year. So is there money in your budget to do the basic maintenance that it requires this year?
It looks like there's been enough left in to carry that, to look after that.
So we just, if we decide we want to go ahead with the pool liner, we have to put that money back in that line item then, correct?
That would be correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Magna said earlier, this is a very, very unique year because of the, you know, the garbage changes and whatnot and so and then the pandemic on top of that, I I think if if there ever was a year that we try to try to maybe make some difficult changes to help our residents out the best we can, maybe this is the year to consider things that we normally wouldn't do. So what's your pleasure moving forward here? Bonnie?
I think it is probably more important to more people to have a lower tax bill than to offer this, the pool service for one to a few people. So I would be prepared to accept having option two in place for the pool for this year. At the recommendation that we could potentially help with some sort of transportation program using funds from the council grants.
Other comments? Truss, you're the closest to it. What's your thoughts?
It's like some time to think over it. If we can put it on the next agenda, that would be great. Just look at the numbers a little more and think about what's going on.
That's that's reasonable, but if there's a, if there's a consensus that we're moving that way, you know, certainly gives people the opportunity to to kind of canvas some of their people and explain that this is a difficult year and we have to make some hard decisions. So I always say that that hard decisions made for the right reasons usually is the best way to go. What's your thoughts, Angela?
I agree with Council Row based on a lot of the recent feedback that I'm getting from my residents that they are very much struggling. I've had many residents express to me they've had to take unpaid leave of absence since in the last month. And they are having difficulty even putting food in their cupboard even after receiving a monthly package from the food bank. It is with regret and difficult decision for me because I'm all about rec that I would rather see them have lower bills and be able to put food in their cupboard. And I am more apt to go that way. And that's why I would recommend using some council grants to help with transportation to get them to the lake.
Richard?
I go along with with option two, but I still would like to see the liner repaired. So we're ready for anything for next year.
Okay. Okay, well, what I'm hearing is that option two is preferred and will will not make, will not finalize that decision until the next meeting. Allowing for any feedback maybe from the from the public. Everybody comfortable with turning this back back to Magna and and the magic that she can sometimes perform of looking down in the in the coach, see if she can find some some change down in there that will be able to repair this liner this year. Is that, is that something, Magda, you can relook at the overall picture and see if there's something in there that we can jig and jog around to make that work?
Mr. Mayor, there is possibility. I would need to sit down with me and kind of estimate the actual utility cost and and the maintenance of our parks, recreation operators. Time that will be allocated. I'm pretty sure we'll be able to find $15,000 for that.
Well, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Lee, even on the chemical side of it, my experience with pools is that when you do have that body load in the pool that your your chemical costs go up and if the pool is not being utilized, I don't think that we have to keep it at the we at the health unit level to for sanitation. So there might be some money saved, some savings in the actual chemical costs.
Yep, that would be correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so everybody satisfied with that. We're gonna tend to re-go with option two. We're going to take some time to be able to just get some feedback from from our ratepayers and we're going to ask Magna to see if she can find enough money to repair the liner this year and then we're ready to go. Are you satisfied with that?
Yes.
Move on.
Okay, so the last slide is basically a refresher from my previous presentation. Basically, it's water and sewage increases. So so we are proposing a very minimal increase for all our water customers. So the flat rate I'm proposing for the current, our current flat rate is at $41.58. I'm proposing to increase that rate to $42. And as for water rate increase, I suggested that we stick to our financial capital recommendation that was done two years ago by shared water management. So I am proposing seven cents a cubic meter water rate increase. So the total increase for water customers only would be $3.30 $3.36 every other month or annually $20.16. Average utility bill for only water customers is in a range of $105, so that's going to increase to $108.36. For the customers that are on water and sewage, I'm proposing for Rodney sewage, I'm proposing no increases whatsoever. However, they will notice a slight increase on their in their sewage rates. And the reason for it is because the sewage rates are calculated by percentage of water flat and water rates. So for Rodney sewage, Rodney sewage is calculated at 171% of water rate and water flat rate. So basically, Rodney customers that are on water and sewage, they'll notice $9.11 increase, bimonthly increase or annually $54.63. Putting it in perspective, the current water bill is in a range of $284.55. That's going to increase to $293.66. Same with West Lauren customers. Their bimonthly increase will be $8.87 or annual 53.22. Their average utility bill is a little bit like about $12 less than Rodney customers. It's 277.20 cents and 286.07 would be their 2021 bill. So that calculation was based on average consumption per four person household, which is 42 cubic meters of consumption.
Hey, any questions for Magna on that slide? So none, everybody's satisfied with the proposal? Okay, I don't see anybody with any specific questions to Magna, so I think we're.
I have one question. Just what is the percentage of increase? I guess is the bottom line that I'm interested in. And maybe you've said this, I apologize if you did. So for each of the West Lauren and Rodney customers and the water only customers, what what percentage increase is that that we're proposing?
Oh, I missed, it looks like I missed that calculation. I provided, can we revisit that when we are going through Rodney sewage and West Lauren sewage and water departments? This way I'll have that calculation ready for you. Sorry.
Super. Thank you.
Anything else on the slide? Okay, well, I know that we we as a municipality, did we not receive a an increase from Cry County this year, Magda?
No, there was an increase. Tri Counties water rate is going up by four cents from 97 cents to $1. Therefore, but however, the reason for water increases is, so number one, we purchase water from Tri County. And number two, we we also purchase water from other municipalities as our residents, West Algen residents are, some of them are on different municipalities connection. And at this point, we cannot go below their cost. For instance, we have West Logan residents that are directly connected to Southwest Middlesex line. Currently, we are paying $1.52 per cubic meters to Southwest Middlesex. So if we don't, so the idea is to increase our water rates so we can cover our cost. So if we leave water rates at $1.51, we're gonna have to pay into Southwest Middlesex on behalf of our customers.
Well, you figured that percentage rate out. I think we're passing on costs from other entities, which we have no control over. So if everybody's satisfied, we can move on to the next slide.
So the next slide is requests from council or questions from council that I have received. So one of them was to help with budget decisions, could you please include a summary of water arrears? So I provided, on this slide, I provided balances as of January 31st for the last three years. As you can see, the numbers are in the bracket, which means we have credit balances. So what this means is that majority of our customers prepaid their water and sewage bills. So as you can see, last three years, there's credit. I think our residents are used to high water and sewage rates and they kind of took it upon themselves to, you know, for the ones that are experiencing financial difficulties, they put money towards the water and sewage bill every week or on a monthly basis.
Okay. Any questions on that slide?
So I guess it just doesn't tell what, how many invoices are in arrears, does it? That was the original question, and I'm sure we do have some that are in arrears, so.
By not a lot. And the reason for it is because we have no choice to before they receive the next bill.
Sorry, you cut out there. I didn't hear what you said.
Oh, so there is not a lot of customers. So basically, there are customers that choose to stay below $100 balance, which kind of gives them, we charge, of course, penalty on that. However, it avoids, it cancels their disconnect. So there is always a small amount of in arrears, but there is nothing major. Usually, if we don't hear from our customers by the time the next bill is ready to be processed, they have no choice but to disconnect them. Usually, we try to, this is our last resort. Usually, we try to work with them. We're helping them by providing them different payment schedules. So, you know, not a lot of them are disconnected. And you know what? In the past, we don't have, we usually try to, number one, avoid disconnection. And number two, unless we don't hear from our customers, then they're being disconnected. And this doesn't happen very often.
So the last question to clarify is that our disconnects this year are not noticeably higher than any other year?
No, and actually, as of this, as of January, we're not disconnecting customers due to COVID. So, but we have, our water clerk is working with all of them. And, you know, if somebody has financial difficulties paying their water bill, they are automatically referred to social services out of St. Thomas. So, you know, there is help for them as long as they kind of communicate that message to us.
Thank you.
Hey. Are there any other questions? Let's move on to the next slide.
So the next slide is the taxes, access arrears. So basically, the question was to deliver a report of taxes arrears by property class. Unfortunately, our Keystone financial software cannot provide council that kind of report. This, it's not possible to do. However, that kind of report cannot be generated by staff. I would need to have programmers involved. And basically, what they would have to do is go through the back end of the system and kind of create reports specifically for what we want that report to be used for. There is a significant cost associated with it. And in my opinion, it's irrelevant at this point. Yes, our tax arrears are high. As of January 31st, 2021, we had the balance in receivables was $877,595.16. Last year, that balance was a little bit less, $849,493.59. And in 2019 was $856,271.56. So as you can see, it fluctuates a little bit, but not a lot. It's been consistent, and that balance has been like this for the last 10 years. But, so council understand that's how taxation works. I mean, we don't have mechanism that would help us hurry and motivate property owners to pay their taxes earlier. We have, so there is a process. If we don't receive payment, we charge penalty and interest. And once, if we're unsuccessful collecting taxes for two years and cannot establish contact with the property owner, we register the property for tax sale. So.
Sorry, Council Cameron has her hand up, sir.
Magna just answered it. I couldn't remember at what timeline the property goes for tax sale, but she just answered it. So thank you.
So additional information as for taxation is, yes, we do charge penalties for late payments and unpaid taxes in accordance with Ontario Municipal Act and Annual Tax Levy Bylaw. There is 1% penalty of overdue taxes. We charge this penalty on the first day of default, and we add an additional 1% interest on the first day of each month until payment is received. So basically, yes, we do, our receivables are quite high. However, on the other hand, when you look at it, it's kind of, it's like an investment for us. The property owners, if they don't pay taxes, we charge interest. And that interest is budgeted and it is included in our budget. So, you know, we're earning 15% interest. So it is kind of an investment for our municipality. Where else can you get a better rate of return, especially today? Nobody, if you invest your money, if you can get 1% interest on your investment, you're lucky. Consider yourself lucky. So, I mean...
But it's only an investment if you get paid.
Well, it's delayed investment because eventually we do get that money once the property is sold.
Okay.
See, even death won't get you off the hook on this one, Bonnie, because the money is owed. And even if you're in the ground, somebody else is going to have to pay it. So it's a pretty, it's a pretty sound investment. And the other thing that I found in discussing it with some of my colleagues at county council, this is not a phenomenon to West Logan. This is in every jurisdiction. Okay. I guess you've explained that. We're gonna go on to, if there's no other questions on that side of it, we'll go on to terminology from the fire department.
And just to let everyone know, the fire chief has joined us, and Angela or Council Cameron has her hand up.
Okay. We have a five-minute break, please.
That's what I was going to ask everybody before we got into this next round. Do we want to, we've been at it an hour and a half. Do you want to have a break? Sounds like you do, Angela, so let's do that.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Hello, Jeff.
Good morning, all.
We're taking a break.
Just a time to breathe.
Everybody to be fresh and ready to...
Do the same thing again.
This is not... Sounds good. See you in five.
You said they can see me?
No, I know they can see you.
Is that my computer?
Yeah. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, I'm gonna, well, no, no, we just need to, I'm gonna log you out of this. For whatever reason, it's not reverting to...
You know, soon as she went on to her slides and changed something there and...
Yeah, yeah.
Can I go into the machine?
Well, it looks like we got pretty much everybody back.
We're just waiting on Richard, sir.
Okay.
Are you talking to us, Trissa?
Nope, just organizing my life here.
Nope, just organizing my life here. So.
Oh.
Okay. Line phone appointments. My one child is a, is a different cohort, so no school today. So I organized that. I know I'm actually loving that when there's a doctor's appointment that it's just a phone call. So it's nice.
Yeah.
Thank you, though.
Okay, we got everybody back but Lee. So I think Jeff is the next item up. So if you want to put that, that screen up, Jenna. Okay, Jeff, you want to take us through this?
Sure. Um, thank you, your worship and, and, and counsel. I gotta apologize if the, the next few slides is maybe it's more information than,
You can see.
than anyone would like, but I'm just trying to kind of give counsel an idea of the, the bigger picture and clarify any items they might be, might be unsure of. So it might be some repetitive, but anyways, I hope it's of some value for counsel. So, just some basic terminology there. To start with regarding the, the pressure to pressure differences in cylinders. And also the different NFPA standard upgrades. So, I hope that's kind of somewhat self-explanatory, but any questions, obviously just jump in and, and let me know if you, if you had one or anything along the way.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll do it slide by slide. Uh, council has every, the slide in front of them. Any, any clarifications that you need on this terminology for this, this slide?
Doesn't appear to be, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to the next slide.
Perfect. So this, um, I think this probably is, is maybe the main, the main, one of the main questions anyways. From, from some or maybe all of council members. About the, the benefits or why we're proposing an upgrade. Or more of a, a conversion to the higher pressure. And, and, well, I can't speak for obviously every member of the department and I wasn't a member of the department at the time. My, my, um, the consensus of it kind of gathered is there was some, uh, quite a bit desire at the time, a couple of years ago, when the new packs were purchased, that, that they thought they should maybe switch to, to forty-five hundred PSI high pressure at that point. And that's not the question, the decision that was made at the time. But, but obviously that wasn't done. Um, in, in the big picture, I think that might have been a, a, a better decision, but, uh, but we can't go back and change that now. So the, the main thing that it boils down to is, uh, a higher pressure bottle. Um, and it's been maybe self-explanatory, but a higher pressure bottle provides more air for firefighters. So they're basically starting out with, with generally speaking, twice the amount of air. As they go into, into a fire or any hazardous situation. So that doesn't mean they have to, uh, and the question's been raised before that, well, do they, does that mean they're working twice as long? Um, no, that's not necessarily the case. It's more about having that, uh, any life safety, environment. It's about having twice the amount of air to start with. There is, um, I mean, there is still several departments that have all, um, twenty-two sixteen PSI, but it is, I think it's fair to say it's fairly, um, unusual that any new packs that have been purchased in the last number of years, um, aren't forty-five hundred PSI. So, that's something to keep in mind as well. And then also low air alarms. So not sure how from a era with the, the functions of a, of an SCBA pack, but, we, we kind of base our, our fire ground operations on how much air we have uh, in the bottles. And usually that's obviously done in, in a pair or a teamwork situation. So the standards have changed over the last number of years that, uh, the low air function now is, it used to be at twenty-five percent and now it's at, uh, up to thirty-five percent. So that air alarm goes off a lot sooner. Which, which means obviously we should be exiting already out of the, the building or the hazardous environments. And then again, kind of go back to having twice as much air available is, uh, is a huge benefit for firefighter safety. Any questions on that slide?
Questions on this one here?
Yeah.
Richard?
Yeah, um, the, the, the higher air pack, does it interchange with, with the low one?
Good question. So if I've understand your question correctly, there's, uh, so the answer would be no. There, you could, you could, for sure, you could have a high pressure pack and a low pressure pack. In service in the, in the department together. But, uh, the bottles, the bottles don't interchange because the, the packs either for high pressure or low pressure, and so was the bottle. So, I mean, down the road, uh, I think we touched on this in a, on a neck, on a further slide, but if down the road is, if counts, if something we wanted to consider is, is phasing in high pressure packs, we, we, that could be done, but we'd have to do it kind of at a, in a, a proper method that we wouldn't get the, um, packs confused per se on scene.
One more question. Okay. The, the double, you know, the two thousand two hundred and sixteen pressure packs, have, have they, do they have a life on them? And so, and where are the majority of those in their life cycle?
Yeah, actually, if, uh, I think, I'm not sure what's the next slide or I know there's another slide that kind of I think answers that question. Yeah. So I hope this, uh, this helps answer that. Kind of two components. So there's the, the pack component and the cylinder of the component. So lifespan on carbon cylinders. So anything that, um, is bought new, it is carbon and has been generally speaking, the first service for a number of years. That is, so lifespan on those is fifteen years. So that doesn't, doesn't really matter. It doesn't matter the pressure, low pressure, high pressure. So that the packs in station two in West Lauren are obviously, or sorry, the cylinders are obviously only a couple of years old. So they're still good for, we'll say thirteen years. And then, but at station one in Rodney, um, they did buy a number of carbon cylinders a few years ago, but they were, they were bought used and, and some of them have already come out of, out of, um, service for their lifespan and, and the rest will, will have to do so in the next couple of years. And in regards to the packs, to answer that question is, uh, um, they're pretty flexible in life span. The, the important thing to keep in mind is, the NFPA standards do change every, as you'll see, every five-ish years, six, seven years. So that's where the life, there it can still be in service, but they, they become outdated, I think is the, the best way to, to put that.
Sir, Councilor Cameron has her hand up.
Andrew?
Good morning, Chief MacArthur. Um, so when the low air alarms go off, how much air would a firefighter have left to get out of a building like? I'm not familiar with how that works. And then in regards to the cylinders, you said that Rodney had purchased a few, a few years ago. So how many bottles do they currently have that?
Thank you. And the, uh, thank you for the question. The, so in, in general terminology, they consider the twenty-two sixteen bottles a thirty minute bottle. And the, um, forty-five hundred bottles of forty-five minute bottle. But it's important to keep in mind that that's a, there's a huge variability there because as we all, with any kind of physical activity, we all breathe at different rates and consume air at different rates. So, again, it's, it's variable, but when the low air alarm went off, it, it, uh, as we train as firefighters, we, if we haven't already exited the building or been going out, we, we, we need to be making plans to do so. And, and I would say a handful of minutes. So you could get, uh, five or seven or eight minutes out of it if you breathe very, um, methodically. But, uh, but if you're doing some physical, some hard physical activities, say pulling down roof or pulling down ceilings, some search and rescue, then, then in a couple of minutes you could, you could drain that air. So it does vary a little bit by, or varies quite a bit, I should say, uh, depending on the firefighter, but, but, uh, yeah, five minutes, five to 10 minutes is probably a pretty fair estimation, no more than. And, um, and sorry, your second question about Rodney, they bought, uh, and checking with the, um, officers last night and Rodney about that. They bought about a dozen cylinders, uh, approximately five years ago, five to seven years ago. And with the fifteen year lifespan, a few of them have already come out of service. And, um, in the next two to three years, we anticipate the rest will have to become out of service. And I'm just looking, yeah, sorry, that's on that slide right in, right in on the screen now. Rodney also does have several aluminum steel cylinders. So for anyone that can maybe picture them, they're the yellow ones. They do have an unlimited lifespan if they're hydrostatically tested every, every five years as needed. But again, uh, to be honest, they're, they're, they're pretty much outdated. They're, they're still usable, but they're, they're heavy for firefighter use and, and are commonly phased out. Commonly phased out by most departments. And then, uh, sorry, go ahead.
One last question. Um, you said when the low air alarm goes off, it depends on how the person is breathing. So they may only have one to two minutes. So just to clarify in my head, cause would that mean to me that maybe when that alarm went off that they may or should be out of the building or like it? I, I'm not familiar with your regulations. So what does, what does it say for that like? Because as you said, everybody breathes a little different. I know, you know, I breathe different when I'm exercising versus when I'm not. So if I was in the building, it'd probably take a forty-five minute pile vacuum by. So, um, what's your standard say about what your, your low air alarms and being in the middle of a building versus by an exit?
Yeah, excellent question. And that, that comes really back to, uh, to, um, training and, and department, department practices. And an important thing to note there is, is every, basically every firefighter duty is done in at least for firefighter safety is done in at least a pair of firefighters, if not more. Depending on, uh, depending on staffing. So say a firefighter A, the air alarm comes off, then, then they're a pair. So the, the two of them firefighter B may have, we'll say twice as much air. That's probably not the scenario, but may have quite considerable more air. But the both of them will have to come out together and, and air conservation is something that, uh, that's taught, uh, taught and training. And in the ten oh one course, that's something they, they definitely focus on is conserving your air and monitoring your air. So, commonly packs have a, have a, uh, not sure, have a gauge that, uh, that the firefighters will monitor, um, and it shows us the pressures drop. So that's something that, uh, cause you have to factor in not only the physical task, but obviously also adrenaline and, and, uh, everything else that may be going on factors into, to breathing time. So in, in past training situations, I've seen the lawyer alarm come on and like I said, some people can get several minutes out of it and, and breathe very calmly and, and sometimes that lower alarm goes fairly quickly and, um, and can come out. So there's no, there's no specific kind of time or, um, and it's specific on that. It, it's more dependent on what duties are being performed. And the overall situation. So it, it does vary.
Thank you.
And just quickly, the bottom note there was, um, yeah, and West Lauren as, as councils, I'm sure where, um, all the carbon cylinders are, or it's all carbon cylinders and they're, they're all approximately two years old. So. And this kind of brings us to, to our second point. And maybe I should have mentioned this upfront and, and, uh, this is a bit of a, bit of a developing situation, I guess, uh, to be honest and, and, uh, about our filling stations. So each, uh, council is likely aware, each station has their own, um, filling station, own compressor station. So this is how we fill the air cylinders. And initial thoughts, um, just amongst officers meetings and, and general discussion over the past few months is that, uh, again, the consensus was, yeah, well, you know what? We thought, uh, at least one, if not both compressors could handle the higher pressure cylinders. But we've just kind of recently realized that, uh, that that's not necessarily the case. And, and like I say, I will have uh, more information going forward. There was a, we had a, um, both compressors are having s- some minor issues, I guess, in a way right now, but, uh, so we had a tech in last week. And, and I just followed up with him again yesterday and he finally sent me some notes, uh, just at five o'clock yesterday about, uh, about the repairs that are needed. And both, we don't know the exact age, but they're both minimum twenty years old, um, twenty, twenty-five, possibly up to thirty years old. The, the, uh, the station in Rodney is, uh, is older than the one in West Lauren. Um, and, and the one, the compressor in station one, obviously it's aged. It also doesn't have the, the proper full protection containment. So basically in simple terms of if a cylinder was to the risk, the main risk of filling cylinders is an explosion because they're obviously they're high pressure. A high pressure cylinder. So, um, station one's compressor is, is a bit outdated that way as it doesn't have the, the full, uh, the full containment system for the operator. And then the compressor, the fill station in station two in West Lauren i- is a bit newer. But we've just, like I say, just recently in the last, uh, week discovered that, uh, it does need some major repairs. So I'm just looking at the, the quick notes that the tech sent last night, but, um, having some pressure building, uh, issues, uh, needs hydrostatic testing. It, it has missed some, some, uh, pretty important service. Service, um, maintenance done in the past. So and I, and I saw a second tech yesterday coincidentally and kind of explain the situation and both texts kind of agreed that they're concerned that, uh, that, uh, that compressor, that system could, could kind of implode on itself, um, any day, which is, which is, uh, which is obviously a concern. And it needs a full service and, and also the recommendation that it, uh, it should be, the compressor should be removed and inspection of the plant. It, uh, it needs, um, leaking at the O-rings. And, and obviously needs some other, other things. And, and one, one other point on that is, uh, neither compressor has a, a CO monitor that, uh, that is required in the latest standard, um, to shut, uh, to shut the compressor down. If, if there's a high level of seal has been, has been reached. So, neither, neither compressor has that. So to kind of summarize, I, I know that's kind of a lot of, or some updated information, I guess, on, on the compressors, but, um, the, the currently we're kind of, what we're recommending, uh, for council consideration is, is to still, uh, consider the switch to high pressure. But I think our priority wise and, and, uh, so we don't put the cart before the horse, I guess, is, is that we need to, uh, um, consider a, um, replacing both aging compressors, fill stations with, with, uh, one new compressor to serve both stations for the department. And, and I, I apologize as obviously we haven't got to the point of getting any quotes or repair, repair quotes. That's what I requested yesterday, uh, to give us some more information. And going back, um, to two thousand eighteen report, which, uh, which Jenna was able to locate for me since our last council or since our last budget meeting. There was a note made at that point, which I wasn't aware of before about the need to, uh, to upgrade the compressors. So ten to ten fifteen thousand, I think is what, uh, I don't, sorry, I don't have it right in front of me, but I believe it was in that ballpark. So it was brought up in, in the past and I understand it was different management, different council at that point. But, um, but so it's a, it's a bit of a, a bit of a shift, I realize in, in, uh, in our capital request, but, um, um, that's kind of the, the direction that, uh, that I think is best for the fire, fire department to, to look at at this point.
Jeff, do you know for a fact whether the existing cascade systems that we've got have the capacity to, uh, to fill forty-five hundred PSI bottles?
Yes and no. The, the, um, they're undersized, especially the one in West Lauren is, is undersized and, and, um, and, and like I said, originally we thought, you know what? We can fill with one, we can probably fill forty-five hundred with one compressor, if not both. And, and part of it's a pressure relief valve and, and partly adding, um, possibly another, another, um, tanker cascade. But, um, the compressor in West Lauren, I, I think it's a fair statement would, uh, would, would disintegrate if we, if we tried to do that at that, at the current point. And, and I, I do think it is really best practice and for health and safety and for, and for efficiency too, for the, for the department and council to, uh, cause you get it again, without having quotes in front of me, but you get into some, some costly upgrades to bring, uh, to bring either or, um, of the compressors up to, up to kind of current standards of that, uh, if that makes sense.
Well, what, what would, you know, this is. Well, what, what would, you know, this is starting to, uh, unfold in a, 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 a proper format. That number one, we have to, uh, go to the end of the chain and, and come to the conclusion whether our, uh. Our filling, uh, capacity will do what we ultimately want to do. And certainly I know that a compressor that will, uh, will fill forty-five hundred pound tanks, uh, can be, uh. Down tuned to fill, uh, twenty-one hundred, uh, compressor, uh, psi tanks. So I, I think that certainly maybe this is, uh, a better investment for us to be looking at. Is start at the, uh, start at the end of the train and, you know, start putting things in place. That will ultimately get us to the, uh, to the end goal. And, uh, you're probably not in a position to be able to give us, as you say, a number of what that's going to cost to upgrade to one, uh. One state, one, one filling station. And, and I think you're on the mark now that, uh, uh, one department, I don't believe, uh, a department of our size. Needs two, two filling stations. So, uh, I look forward to more information to come.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. I appreciate that. And I think, uh, and I don't want to, just for council, this is a very rough number. So, um, I would think a new fill station, just so we have an idea would, would put us in the, in the forty to fifty thousand dollar range. And again, that's without a quote, that's just, uh, just based on some past knowledge. So, um. But, um, my, my hesitation, obviously before we get to re- repair quotes and, and more information is that, uh. Um, I don't know if it would be, um, the best, uh, practice to, to put, uh, quite a bit of money into a, into a twenty-five year old compressor. I guess if we're going to spend, uh, spend several thousand dollars and maybe tens of thousand dollars to upgrade that. Where we can, uh, kind of start new and, and serve both stations. So. Angela first.
So based on the fact that we've been made aware that there's some issues with these compressors, I'm assuming that you put them both out of service. And so we can get the proper recommendations on both of them. Um, what steps do we have in place to get, uh, um, the cylinders filled? If, um, the need arises, um, to have them filled, if we've had to put both our compressors out of service?
Yes, and, and, uh, my understanding at this point is in the short term, I believe we can probably get the, uh, Rodney station one compressor. Up and running, um, at least for short-term use in, in the near future. Um, but, uh, as of today, in, in the past, I guess, week or so, um. Chief Dan Lundy and Dutton's been kind enough to, to offer us filling, uh, they've got a fill station compressor at the Dutton station. So, um, if needed to, we were able to, uh, to fill there. Bonnie, do you have, yeah, Bonnie?
Yeah, just to clarify then, so, uh, you may not be in a position to, to sort of give your finalized budget, uh, proposal. But, uh, I think I heard that the capital, the initial, initial capital request for, uh. Uh, replacement and conversion of the, uh, SCBA at ninety-three. Is going to be withdrawn for another year and the replacement of the compressor is going to go in there for potentially fifty?
I think, uh, and I hope you, I hope it's obviously still a developing situation as we get more information. But yes, I think, uh, that's a fair statement to summarize. Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions, uh? For Jeff? Uh, you know, I, I think from council's perspective, Jeff, we, we fully understand that, uh, you know, coming onto the scene just recently. That there are a lot of these little landmines that you're going to find along the way as we move forward. And certainly we understand that, uh, as you dive into, uh, things a little deeper. That, uh, uh, the end goal might change. So certainly, uh, we have an understanding that, uh. You know, you're looking in the closets and under the beds and trying to find out what is current and what needs to be upgraded. And so thank you very much for recognizing that, uh, yes, we do have a compressor problem, not as so much a tank problem.
And, and I, and I appreciate council's kind of understanding as we, uh, yeah, as we kind of work through this.
Any other questions for Jeff? So Magna, you're good to be working away with Jeff on some of these numbers and, uh. And, uh, obviously there will be a, a somewhat of a different end result from the fire department budget.
Yes, Your Worship.
Chris?
Uh, through the chair, I'm just, uh, making sure, uh, Chief MacArthur, everything that you're saying, it was discussed in the meetings and such. And it's, um, open and, uh, had some, uh, input from the deputy or the station chiefs?
Yeah, we had a, um, we had a senior, as I say, some of that information, I just, I probably just passed on to the deputy. Cause it was just from last night, but, um, um, we had a seniors office meeting, uh, um, last week. And, and those that I were able to attend, uh, that was the kind of, um, that was a general discussion we had. So, and I checked, uh, with Deputy Chief Beer again yesterday, just to touch base on the general situation. So among the senior officers, yeah, the communication's been, been there so far.
Okay, everybody satisfied with fire report? Uh, we can move on. See no other hands going up? Uh, where do you want to go next?
Sir, do you want to move into approving, um, council grants? That's our next. Or would you prefer to go into individual, Megda and sir, would you prefer to go into the individual operational budgets? Since we have Heather and, and the fire here.
Yes, I would suggest that we go with planning and building inspection next.
Yeah, I, I agree. We have their honor divided detention right now, so let's take advantage of it. Uh, we got something for planning?
I don't have a presentation. No, do you want, we can go through the operation?
Okay, um, that's, that's in our, uh, our budget package that was handed out.
So Mr. Mayor, I can go over, um, planning budget as, and I just, um, I asked Heather. Uh, to kind of make available for this meeting in case there are questions. Um, related to official plan or, um, any other, uh, projects that she has been involved. So, um, planning. Budget is very straightforward. Um, as, uh, planning fees. We're kind of estimating them to be the same as in twenty twenty. Um, billings for self, um, for self-walled. As you can see, there is only, um, ninety-eight hundred dollars budgeted as, um, our planner. Is, uh, going off on maternity leave. Uh, we have, um. We are, um, working with, um, with the county. And, um, we are, uh, planning on having a replacement for the time being. Unfortunately, I don't have, um, uh, any details. Uh, to that, so. However, I did budget, um, some money as we're gonna have to, um. It's going to be part of our shared services and we're gonna have to reimburse county for, uh, for it. Um, out for the planner and that amount is captured under contracted services. So basically planners wages consist of, um, from anywhere until March. Um, benefits and there is membership, very little amount of, for memberships and dues. Small amount for postage, um, and advertising. And the reason why, um, I allocated a little bit more, uh, some, in twenty twenty, we have created. Departments on, in our post machine. So now, um, the allocation of postage will be done, um, with, um, better accuracy. Advertising, um, thousand dollars and there is a cost for the official plan of eighty-five thousand dollars. And that cost is, um, being covered through our transfers, uh, from reserves. So, that being said, we're looking at, uh, the deficit of thirty-seven thousand dollars for the planning department. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions from anyone? Um, I, you know, quickly scanning over that, uh. Is there no budget line for any legal fees that might be, uh. Occurred through, uh. You know, asking for legal advice on planning issues? Is that captured somewhere else?
Yes, so all legal fees are being captured through administration.
And that eighty-some odd thousand dollars, that is a estimate for, uh, fees for twenty twenty-one. Towards the OP, cause I don't think that will be finished in twenty-one, twenty-one, will we?
Do you want to answer that question?
Uh, sure, I can speak to that. Um, so yes, that money is kind of, um, the carryover into twenty twenty-one. For the official plan as we budgeted. If you recall, we awarded the contract to Dylan Consulting and I believe it was right around a hundred and twenty thousand. Um, in terms of being able to finish up on twenty, within twenty twenty-one, that is the goal. That at, at the very least, we will have the draft official plan document prepared by December of twenty twenty-one. We may still into twenty twenty, uh, the beginning of twenty twenty-two, we may be into some open house and public meeting.
Any other questions on the planning budget? Some of that, uh, forty-seven thousand dollars that will, uh. For outside consultants, some of that will, will it be captured through, uh? Our app, application process that, uh, people wishing to, uh, have planning services will be paying for those. And will that offset some of the, uh, the, uh, outside consultant costs?
Whatever we, um, collect in, uh, planning fees. Doesn't even come near of what we have to, uh, what it costs us to, um, have full-time planner. Um, basically, uh, majority of these costs are covered by the general tax rate.
And like everything else, whether it be building or whatnot, we're trying to merge that closer together. That it hopefully at some point in time, uh, planning can be closer to being self-sufficient. I don't think we'll ever see that day, but. Okay, any other questions on the planning kicker? Everybody satisfied as presented? Not seeing any hands. So, oh, Bonnie's got putting that right, that, put that thumb up. So she's good. All right. Anything you want to add, Heather?
Uh, nothing further, Your Worship.
Okay, well, then we'll move on to Jackie then.
Good morning, council, members of council. How are you?
So far, so good. Uh, Magna, do you want to, uh, go over this? Go over the, uh, building, uh, departments, building inspection budget?
Yes, um, Ms. Mayor, just getting to it. Okay. So no major changes through, um, from the original. Draft budget. The only, um, change I included was the software license. Uh, fee, this fee is an annual fee and it will never go away. It's, um, it's a cloud-based software and basically we're splitting, we're splitting the cost with, uh, Dutton Dunwich. So from now on, as of twenty twenty-one, we will be budgeting additional seventy, sixty-seven eighty into our budget. Um, with the. Slight increase in building, uh, permits and, um, septic permits. We unfortunately, um, we are unable to break even. Um, but there is, um, there will be some efficiencies down the road. And, and I believe that our building inspector is, um, um, working towards, um. You know, identifying them and, um, making sure that down the road, uh, building inspection pays for itself.
Okay, I think any questions for Magna or Jackie on this budget?
Counselor Coward has her hand up, sir.
Yes, Angela.
Magna, you had said earlier the new grant that was announced would pay for software and licenses. Is this software licensing something that, um, it would fall under if we were awarded the successful grant?
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, so we wouldn't be able to hold off increasing, uh, building fees potentially for twenty twenty-two. If we were awarded that grant, um, otherwise Jackie would have to increase the fees substantially in twenty twenty-two. To be self-sufficient.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see.
What's that?
I do not see anybody else's hands raised.
This, uh, this cloud-based software, this is kind of a new industry standard that, uh, is necessary for building inspectors?
I, I don't know about necessary, but it does, uh, help bring in some efficiencies, uh, to the department. By allowing people to apply for permits online, keeping everything digital. So there's little to no paper any longer. Uh, don't have to do plans review on hard copies. Everything can be done online with, uh, the, not with cloud permit, but with the, um, permit review software. Which is, uh, the cost of that, I think it was three, three or four hundred bucks, uh, for that software. And then, but everything else stays digital. So all the inspection reports, nothing has to be printed any longer.
I think this is definitely moving in the right direction and, uh. Certainly going to increase the, uh, efficiency of the department. So, anything else? Seeing none? Uh, thank you very much, Jackie.
Thank you.
Okay, where are we going next?
Magna, where would you like me to start next?
Still have Jeff. We can, we discussed, uh, capital, um. Sure, however, we did not really have a chance to go through operating budget. Um, and I would recommend that, um, you know, we go through fire department operating budget now.
All right. First off, I guess you've reviewed this or assisted in putting this together, Jeff. Anything that you want to highlight before I turn it over to, uh, council for their scrutiny?
Um, no, just I know it's been discussed in the past, but obviously, uh, Megda, we put together a, um. A combined budget for, for, um, for the fire department as a whole, for both stations. There'll be some station-specific items that come up from time to time. But, uh, generally speaking, I think, uh, I think this is a, a good way to go to have a, a single fire budget. So, um, the norm, I'll call them the normal line items are, are fairly consistent, uh, with other years. And, and maybe if, uh, we could scroll down to the next, uh, the next, for the bottom second page, I guess I should say. I'll just quickly touch on a couple of notes. There is, uh, um, the training, uh, we do see, uh, I do see an increase in, in training this year. And I laid that out to kind of explain that, um, over half of that is, or a large portion of that is for our new recruit training. So, uh, fifteen hundred, uh, fifteen hundred dollars each, we do have five recruits enrolled in the Oxford County course this year. Um, and, and that's really, in my opinion, uh, money well spent. And, and that's really, in my opinion, money well spent because if all goes well, they will, they'll come out fully trained and firefighter one and two and, and ideally certified too, as they write the, the tests. So. And then we've left with the Fire College closing and COVID unknowns, it's a bit of an unknown exactly what, what other Fire College and related expenses will have throughout the year. So we, we've put, we put a number in there that should cover regional training costs and anything, and costs, other costs in Oxford County that we, we have firefighters enrolled in this year. So PPE, I had asked Mag about it and we, we separated that out from the, the equipment purchase. So, and Mag, correct me if I'm wrong, but before the equipment and the, the PPE was, was kind of shown together. And I thought we have a benefit for, for council and for everybody to kind of separate that. Obviously, we have a, a large PPE bunker gear mainly expense that was approved last fall under note two. So that, that's our twenty sets, or sorry, ten sets of bunker gear, ten being purchased last year or yes, last year in 2020. So we separated that a little bit just to show the difference in, in kind of, because helmets and boots and gloves is something that again, we should be replacing on a regular basis. And, and once in a while you get, get a couple that come up through the year that need replacing. So that's kind of our general PPE allowance there. Software, no, sorry, stick, no, three uniforms. So again, that would be fairly common expenses, stationware for some, some newer fire, the newer firefighters and dress for, generally speaking, for those that are finished probation that don't have dress uniforms because the, the remainder of the department does. Note four licensing. So we could probably eliminate that, that symposium cost is one thing we make, we can likely eliminate when we, when we do, if we do switch to the Who's Responding app with the burn permit. We've, we've put in a thousand dollars for, for the burn permit expense. I do honestly think it's, it'd be considered maybe half of that. But with initial setup and any hardware we might need, I wanted to make sure that we had enough room to, to get that launched. And, and I think it's very fair to say that the staff time that will be saved is, is, will be considerable when we get that in place. And then note five, equipment purchase. So the tablets and monitors are to go to incorporate with the Who's Responding app and the burn permit, which, which work together. Some AV upgrades for the Rodney Training Room. And then again, and it did to, not to generalize everything, but some fairly common helmet holders, some flashlights for, for firefighters. Pumper two cylinder holder. So that's something that when the pumppers were bought, new cylinder holder got installed in pumper one in Rodney and, and with the plans to do the matching one in, in pumper two in West Lauren. But that never got complete. So we'll get that done this year. Some pump ops, gate valves, some, some general equipment items for the pumper. Host testing was another item. And I believe I, I mentioned this in the previous meeting, but best practice in NFA requires that annual host testing to prevent any failures on, on the fire scene or, or even in training. And there has been a hose tester in, in the past, but it, it, I believe it's currently out of service because it's not, not ULC or not up to NFA standards. Couple of new portable radios and also pagers again, kind of regular expenses to, to eliminate a large expense down the road. Happy to answer any other questions out of that.
Question, Bonnie?
Oh, I'm unearnered. With regard to the PPE, are any of those expenses ones that we might potentially get reimbursed with the granting from the government for equipment, PPE for the pandemic?
Well, I can't speak to exactly how Magna allocates that stuff. There has been, there has been some smaller expense respiratory items that, so some extra PPE that, yes, we have bought that we normally wouldn't have. In the big picture, I'll be honest, it's not a, it's not a huge expense though. It's, it's fairly minor items for most of it.
Okay, thanks.
Richard?
Yeah, okay, thanks, Jeff. We were just, I was looking at the air compressor that you was talking about a little bit. And then I look at the requests all the way down quite a list. Is there any way you can sharpen your pencil a little bit? And to help out with one of these compressors?
And sorry, when you say one of the compressors, like you mean the proposed compressor?
Yeah, to, to fill the.
To, to make up for the extra, for the other expense.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and we can definitely, I mean, this is, and again, Magna can correct me if I'm wrong. I, I believe if we, if we combine all those notes in the operating budget and take out some of those items we already talked about, it's fairly consistent with, with what's been on the past. And, and I believe it's been adjusted. One thing we did this, mentioned last council meeting, or at least I think I brought up was, yeah, the transfer to reserves there. So I believe we had a hundred thousand in there initially. I see Mag shaking her head. So that's, that's one thing we, although we definitely support, and I mean, the more we could transfer to reserves, the better. There's no question about that. But we have, I believe, I guess, divided that in half to fifty thousand. So we can definitely look at the operating budget a little bit carefully if, if council wishes. But I hope it's fair to say that there's not, not too much out of the ordinary there in regards to, to, to equipment purchases.
Okay, I was just looking at it and I'm not, I'm not trying to be facetious at all, but you have to watch along with, you know, some of the firefighters in a way that, that it's not once, it, it's got to be needs.
Yep, no, and that, that's a very good point. And and I, and as we go move forward, I mean, establishing the PP is a good, I guess, a good example of that is, is once we establish more of a regular, I guess, purchasing routine that I think will, will kind of provide some consistency going forward. But I can definitely bring that forward to the offices and see what, if, what we can, I guess, what we can put to the bottom of the list, if that's fair, to save some money.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Trust?
To the chair, Chief MacArthur, I just, you said that the hose tester was a bit out of service. How long has that been? And so how are you testing hoses? I just was unclear with that.
Sure. And you know what? I'll, I definitely found that out. I, I don't, I'll follow up with, with Deputy Chief Beer. And I could be wrong. I don't believe any hose was tested last year. Again, I don't know that for certainty. But I will find out exactly how long that hose tester's been out of service. So.
Other, other questions?
Angela.
Sir, Angela has her hand up.
Yep, go ahead, Angela.
To the chair, I see that we still have pagers listed. I do know some other neighboring municipalities that no longer use pagers. It's some type of an app that's on your mobile device. I know you have software licensing on here. Is, is that something that is an option within our department? And not to use a paging system or to, you know, maybe minimize some of, because I see you have three thousand six hundred and then there's a paging expense for six hundred and fifty that maybe we could cut that or, or just have a, a software fee? Have we looked at that to, you know, maybe modernize West Elgin a little bit?
And I'll, I'll talk a little bit on my South Old experience with that. And so the, the Who's Responding fifteen hundred dollar line that you see there, that's, that is basically a electronic, a virtual paging system. So we've, it's been in South Old and Central Algonkin, a few other municipalities for a few years. And, and from my experience of South Old, we've had very good luck with it, like I'll say ninety-five to ninety-eight percent success with it. The, and we've had that discussion, can we, can we get away from a physical page for instance, or pager for instance? And, and I do think that is in the near future, but I don't think we're quite there yet. The, as I say, the app's very reliable, but it again, it does, the downfall of the app is internet. So if the, if we have an internet outage, then the app goes down. So then, then we have to rely on the, I guess, the typical paging system. So it's a great, I mean, five years ago, I don't, it was not a very common practice. But, so I think we're transitioning there, but we're not quite there yet. And on the paging note, we've, we're working through the officers as a whole, we're working through, going through, we have several pages, some that need repair, some that need to be discarded, but we're working through them to see what, if we can repair any of the older ones or if they just need to be discarded because we may have, we may be able to repair some and, and lower that expense of new ones.
One final question. So what is the process for hose testing and the equipment that's required and the timeline? Just to kind of help me understand that, that I see this request is on there. If you could help maybe educate council?
Sure, sure. So that, that comes to an NFA standard. And, and I think it's fair to say it's fairly common practice in the county and the province, I guess, that annual hose testing. So and you know what? You look back a number of years, it wasn't something that was, was normally done really, but and I mean that as, as a whole in the, in the local fire service, but it done annually. And so the hose tester in the past, I think some departments have used a fire pumper to, to, to test hose with. But that's not, that's not the acceptable standard. It's actually, it can be electronic, often electronic motor. So it's a kind of a wheel tool that you can hook several lengths of hose up to, it builds the pressure up, it checks for any leaks, obviously, any expansion on the connections, any other issues and ensures that we're not going to have a, I guess, a hose line failure on scene. So as I say, it's something that you look back five or 10 years was, was not commonly done, to be honest, but it's definitely best practice now.
Thank you.
Yeah, you have a hose connection blow out, the hose that turns into a pretty wild animal if it's just freewheeling with, with pressure off it that could, could do some serious physical harm to those standing close by.
Yeah, and we're fortunate in the fire service now, and even in rural Ontario, that, that the number of fires that we quote unquote, fight have dropped, right? There's, there's medicals and MVCs and everything else, but and of course, training too, but the fire hose for several, several months of the year may not get any use, right? So then hose testing helps along with training, but hose testing definitely helps with that to get the hose rebedded and tested and, and make sure everything's current and, and good to go.
Do, do we have a hose replacement schedule? Is that anywhere in our, in our overall master plan? Or how, how does that?
Yeah, and that's something that, you know what, has not, from my quick recollection, we haven't really discussed hose at all. And I think, I think the plan was, yeah. And again, I don't have, I don't have a great knowledge of, of hand of exactly what hose testing has been done previously with the other hose tester. But getting hose tested onto a routine allows us to, to see what we may or may not to replace. And that's the other challenge, maybe that, and again, maybe I think hose testing was done fairly recently, a couple of years ago. But if you don't hose test for a while and then, and then hose test, you may get quite a few failures and, and have to, have to purchase some hose. But so yeah, good question. That, that's something we should consider going forward as well.
One, one other thing when it comes to training. Do we have separate training protocol for Highway 401 calls that our firefighters are, are well versed of the do's and don'ts on a 401 call scene to protect themselves?
We, very timely question, just in the past month or I think even the past couple of weeks, we, I've put, put together a new OG operating guideline that it's a little tough now with no in-person training to, to to do a full session of, but it's been a shout out to, to all firefighters and and kind of explain, this is something that we discussed at the December offices meeting because the 401, and I may have said this already to council, but I live quite close to the 401 myself and, and it's, it's a busy spot. And it poses as many dangers to us. If you look at a frequency basis as any other types of, of calls, it's a, it's a dangerous road, as we all know. So we put together specific, just recently, a specific operating guideline, just on Highway 401 response. And, and something that we're also looking at is the unique, not the unique, but the, the challenge, West Elgin, and it's just kind of worked its way down the county is the cable barrier. So those of you that travel the 401 are familiar with the cable barrier. It's, it's newer to Elgin. In the long-term planning, there is the hope and the plans from the province to put in, to widen it to six lanes and put in a concrete barrier down the middle, which would be by far the, the safest for us. The, the danger with any median incident. So obviously you have, if you have a vehicle in the median in between the lanes, the, the 401 is quite narrow through Elgin. And the cable bearer is a great addition, but a vehicle or a heavy truck or even a small vehicle will still take that, that cable barrier out. And usually the post will fold over and the cable kind of goes flying. But it won't necessarily keep vehicles from coming into the median. So one thing we have discussed is actually dispatching a, so now generally for, generally speaking for 401 calls, one station responds depending on where the mile marker is. But we are, we are likely going to put in dispatching a tanker from the other station just to provide that extra blocking apparatus for any firefighters that are working in the median. So it's honestly something I take quite seriously. And and, and the challenge with any scene, any scene, but on the 401 is you never know exactly the situation until you get on scene. And, and having obviously anybody, an apparatus or any firefighter in an incident is, would be our worst nightmare.
I'm, I'm just, while we're thinking, we're bringing on the new recruits and I want to ensure that they, they understand just exactly how dangerous it is out there because that's, that has always been my worry that I had of sending our fellows out onto that 401. And it's probably the most, the most dangerous exercise that we have.
I would tend to agree with you on a, on a frequency basis for sure, hundred percent.
Any other questions for Jeff on the operating budget of West Elgin Fire? I'm glad to see that combined, a combined budget, I think that's the first time ever that that's happened. So we're moving in the right direction. Bonnie, question?
Yeah, just to summarize so that I have this correct in my mind. So looking at the original draft of six hundred and thirty-two thousand, we've removed ninety-four from the capital for the SCBA replacement. And then added about fifty. I know you're in the middle of trying to figure that out, but for discussion purposes, fifty for the compressor and then taking fifty out of the reserve transfer. So we're at around five hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Is that kind of what you're?
Quick math adds up to me, but I'll, I'll throw it over to Meg to, to make sure that my math's not wrong on the spot. Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah. So that you'll see if, what I'm looking at here, the package is the fifty transferred reserves has already been adjusted. And then we can, for this year, we can, my proposal is at least that we, we change that ninety-three to, to a rough number of fifty for a, for a possible compressor. So.
And obviously I, I'm thinking personally about the replacement of the pumper. And I can't remember how many years down the way, but it isn't too far. So that transfer to reserves is, is somewhat of a concern to me as well.
Yes, I would, I would agree. We, we, it's, I guess it's a, it's a tough balance for, for council to, because yeah, we want to always, the more we can put in reserves is, is better. Because, and I think it's a tanker that's in the schedule. And again, And again, a replacement schedule is something we'll, we'll bring to council early out later in this year, early this spring, hopefully.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other hands coming up, everybody done? We're done with Jeff's part of our meeting? Okay, well, thank you very much, Jeff, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Okay, what, it's 12 o'clock, what's your pleasure? You want to roll on, or? Keep rolling, keep rolling, all right, sounds good.
Megda, where would you like me to start now, sharing my screen?
So we can go back to the beginning of the budget, we can start with administration now?
Okay.
Okay, anything you want to highlight in there?
Um, no, pretty much the only, the only line item that I would like to discuss with council is grants and donations. The rest of it is pretty self-explanatory, unless council has questions or, or comments. Now is the time to bring that out.
Anybody got their hand up, Jenna?
I don't see anyone, no, sir, I don't see anyone.
Okay, do you want to go and discuss the, is this the time that we go into the grants and adjudicate the grants and donation line, or what's your thoughts, Megda?
Yes, if, if council is okay with it, I would like to discuss grants and donations now.
Okay. Do you want to do each one? Go through each one and decide, and council can decide whether the, we're in or out, or somewhere in between?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to put that back up again, the?
I'm just putting the summary sheet up, just give me one quick second.
What we need.
There we go.
Okay, well, we'll start out right at the top with the Auburn Public School Electronic Sign requesting $15,000. Any comments? And nobody's putting their hands up anywhere?
Bonnie has her hand up currently, sir.
Okay, Bonnie?
Yes, I, I feel this is a, a good request. I think it will be helpful to the municipality as well, as well as the community. So I would support this request.
Tressa has her hand up, sir.
Go ahead.
Through the chair, yes, I'd support this request. It's our kids, the community, everyone benefits from it. They've done some part on their end to try to raise funds for the sign. And I just think it's really important for the community, school community and the community as a whole, to have something like this going on, on the main road especially.
And remember, Sir Richard and Angela have declared conflicts, so it's just the three of you.
The only thing that's kind of sticking in my mind is if we're going to contribute almost half of the money towards that sign, are, are we getting a guarantee that the municipality can have access to putting information on that sign if we so desire?
Through the chair, we could approach Mr. Fife and, sorry, I called her madam, so, or Mrs. Stover, to ask them if that would be something that they'd be interested or up for, and what the parameters are of the sign, that maybe something you have to ask them.
I think there was wording through the chair in the proposal about that, that they looked forward to collaborating with municipality for, for posting. So there was a, a door left open for that, for sure.
Through your worship, yes, I did speak to the principal about that, and they are willing to put municipal signage and stuff. Mind you, with the school, there will be some parameters around it, because of school board rules, and theirs would have to take precedence, but they have no issue with the municipality asking for things to be on the sign.
I thought that there was very good support from other sources for this project through both the board budget, the parent-teacher association, and also general business and citizen donations, which they've already undertaken. So I, I thought that that was reasonable.
Do we, do we know how much money they have in hand to do this project?
Sounds like they've got the rest. They, they essentially are waiting on this decision to place the order in February, from, from what I understood.
Is there any thought to granting this with a offset limit of $15,000? But if they are more successful in their fundraising, that they don't require all of the 15,000, is that something for us to consider?
Sure, that sounds reasonable.
So I'll word the grant award of up to 15,000 pending fundraising?
Well, depending, depending on the?
Other sources of funding.
Other sources of income. I mean, if they are over the top, and they only require $10,000 from us to finish the project, that's certainly better than 15. And I wouldn't want them just to quit because the fact that we're going to throw 15,000 in.
Okay.
Everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Good. All right, moving on to Eagle Community Center Foundation Repair. What's your pleasure there?
Is Angela back on?
I am.
Okay.
Counselor Taya has a question.
Yes, Press.
Sorry, I hit two buttons at once, through the chairs. So it's a historic building, used to be a school, I believe, in the paperwork, it says. Obviously, they've needed the repairs, and they've seeked out some of the funding for it. I'm wondering if the, when I look at their list there for what they need for permits and such, if maybe we could do an in-kind for some of those permits? If that could be something we could look at? And then lower the amount of the 10,000 to put in. They do need to repair it, as I said, it's a heritage building, but those are my thoughts when I read it, to see if we could do some of those, the $1,200 that they quoted, some of those in-kind, if they were something related to the municipality.
Any other thoughts?
Counselor Rowe has her hand up.
Go ahead, Bonnie.
I guess, you know, I had the same thoughts in my mind as I went through this application, that it's about just a shade shy of a quarter of the cost, total cost. They're looking at other sources of funding, so that is positive for me. In terms of in-kind, I guess that's probably taking out of one municipal pocket to, to decrease out from the other. So it might be just a make-work project in terms of that kind of in-kind. But overall, I, I felt that this is a very active group that is maintaining this building really well. It is a heritage building, even though we don't have any designations in our municipality. If we did, this would be one of them. Yeah, and so I supported the 10,000.
Any other comments from council?
Richard has his hand up, sir.
Richard?
Yeah, through the chair, yeah, I'd like to support this, I, I think it's quite important. Eagle is a good little community, and it has to be kept as such. You know, technically, we're, we're the owner of that building, and so we're really looking after our own. So I think we should support this, because if it falls down, we're going to be left with the rubble.
Anybody else, any comments?
So we're approving the 10,000?
Seems to be a consensus for the grant request.
Okay.
Hey, Rodney Agricultural Society. Again, another one of those maybe, maybe not events.
Counselor Rowe has her hand up, sir.
Hey, Bonnie?
Yeah, just through the chair, the thought processes that went into these requests for me were, A, we had granted funds last year, and they didn't use them. So that was one of the reasons why our council grants were so low last year, among some other requests. And it is a, an estimate for sure, based on the possibility. I think that it is fair to propose supporting them in these ways. So I, I would support the requests. Although, when I added up the 8150, I'm not sure how that number, we ended up with that number, because adding up the total of the COVID costs, the cleaner, the, the fish fry, and then the two in-kinds, it adds up to 9,750 in my calculator.
I just did the 1,600 plus the 800 plus the 5,750 and got 8150. It's all built into the spreadsheet. And Counselor Cameron has her hand raised.
Yeah, Angela?
Through the chair, Minister York recently announced some funding. So I would be in support of approving funding pending their decline of the application for Minister York. But I would like to see them apply for that application, because essentially, they would be double-dipping if they got from us and from them. So I'd also like to know what they got from the county as well. Because in my mind, again, they're double-dipping from the taxpayers, and I don't want to see that happen. I fully support to try and keep the, you know, the Rodney Fair within Rodney, but I'd like to have them take advantage of the grants that have recently been announced, and put those stipulations in there, and then see what comes back, and we can go from those steps.
They did receive, and it's not been, it's not been passed by county council officially yet, but they did, they did score very well with, with the county, I think, somewhere around the same amount of money of what they're requesting here. But traditionally, they have been supported both by, by West Algen and the county. But I think you're absolutely right, Angela, that certainly we should encourage them to be applying for the Provincial Agricultural Society grant. And then, I don't know how, how we adjudicate that, and what kind of language we put in to, to try to offset some of our costs if they're receiving money from the province. That we need to have with the Fair Board?
There's two ways, sir, there's one you could put, we agree to pay up to this over funding, but I believe Counselor Taya has her hand raised, and she may have some information about some of that.
Okay, Press, enlighten us.
Through the chair, so my understanding is, being on this committee, that they have applied for whatever grants have come up. I know they applied for last year, and then they had kickback when things didn't happen with the COVID grant that went to the agricultural societies. So, and I believe the new one that was just announced over the time of Roma is also one that they're going to be applying to. So they have all their ducks in a row for those. So I can understand council wanting to put some wording in that over and above. But yes, they have been reaching out for any grants that they could bring into their society.
Okay.
Or what I was going to say was, council will award up to X amount of money for COVID-19 precautions that aren't covered through any other funding source, any other granting sources? You can list provincial COVID-19 grant, it depends on how you want to word it.
What, what's your thoughts on that, Press?
Yeah, that wording would be great. She cut out a little bit, I didn't catch all of it. What I did catch is the wording would fit exactly the situation.
Hey, everybody happy with that?
So I just need to know the amount that you're willing to pay.
What's your pleasure there? What's your recommendation, Press?
Sorry, you guys keep cutting out, can you repeat?
We need to know the amount that you want to cover for COVID-19 precautions, total, up to. I think she's froze, am I frozen, Tressa, or?
Yeah, everyone's frozen but Duncan. I don't know if you guys can still hear me.
Yeah. Duncan, can you repeat what I was saying?
Uh.
Oh, okay, we're good.
So we're looking for an amount of up to, how much do you want to cover for the COVID-19 precautions? That's what he, the mayor was asking for a requested amount.
Yeah, I, I should probably shouldn't speak for the entire board, is what I'm thinking.
Counselor has his hand raised as well as counsel.
It says these, these costs are estimated, so I don't know exactly what they have included in that, just the regular precautions that the health unit has decided upon. So yeah, I don't want to speak for the whole board for that.
What, what if we were awarded that we would provide up to the requested amount unless other sources of funding, i.e. provincial grants, cover what the request is? Can you put that into a language that somebody could understand?
Yeah, that wording would be great.
It's a little complicated, sir, Counselor Rowe and Counselor Cameron have both had their hands up.
All right, well, you pick one, because I don't know who had their hand up first.
Counselor Cameron's got her raised right now.
For COVID precaution funding, is there any way that we can perhaps partner with them? And, and Leah, I don't want to put you on the spot, but have we secured some type of bulk purchasing agreements that we could help lower some of their COVID precaution expenses and lower some of these $5,000 funding requests? And, and not saying to necessarily do it in kind, but if we're paying for it anyway, um?
Problem I see, Angela, is we don't, we don't even know what the precautions are going to be, because we're, we're looking at August, and who knows whether we're in a red, orange, yellow, gray lockdown, stay-at-home order. It's very difficult, again, through these times, to predict what is what.
But I understand, but they're going to need sanitizer, stands, and this and that. And if, if we have a bulk supply of sanitizer and gloves and, and various things like that, if we're paying for it anyway, what's the difference?
Well, we do have three stands, I do believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Magdalen Lee, we have three stands, and we do have a fair amount of sanitizer. But I believe that 5,700 included extra handwashing stations, PPE and masks and things for their volunteers there, and that's all scarce even for us.
Okay, and that's what I was asking, is if we've been able to secure a bulk supplier that can supply the municipality, that we could just make a bulk purchase to help lower their costs? But it doesn't appear that we're even in that situation. So I would be willing to approve to a maximum of $5,000 for COVID precautions.
But I, oh Bonnie, I think you had a question next.
Yeah, I was, I was just proposing the same thing that we offer up to 5,750, which has been asked for if other sources don't come through for them.
Okay, are we all, all in agreement with that? You're satisfied with that, Richard?
Yeah, I was just, I was looking at, I think, you know, if they have to spend 5,750, maybe the fair won't be going on anyway.
Good, good possibility of that. I mean, I don't think anybody's crystal ball is really going to be able to tell us what the future's gonna bring here coming near and hopefully we're still not into it in 2022.
I would certainly like to support the fair and I have, you know, I'd like to see it go on. But I think when you've got to spend that type of money to try to make it safe, there must be something still bad about. So I'm a little cautious, but yes, a part of that money, if they got to use it to make it happen, then I'll go along with it.
Well, whether, you know, if it doesn't, if it doesn't get to be used, then it, you know, we, we keep it in our, our grants account and we deal with, we deal with it as it comes along and deal with it again next year. So we, at some point in time, we hope that the fair is back and things are normal.
Question, I have a question. So the cleaner and for the cleaning for the recreation center and the pool, those are estimates because they're not sure what it will cost more for COVID-19 as well? Would you like to put a cap on that or we just pay for them no matter what their costs?
Well, again, it's an open-ended question.
Yes, I wanted you to be aware that that was, the idea was they estimate, it's an estimated cost. They're asking that we pay for it no matter what and it's, it's council. I want to make sure I'm clear to them.
Paid if they're, if it's used, paid if it's provided.
Yes, yeah, yes. Pending receipts, okay. So we're not putting a cap on it, right?
We don't know what kind of cap to put on it.
Exactly, it's too hard, that's what I, I felt like I had, I spent about a half an hour to 45 minutes on the phone with their treasurer there. She said, "It's just so hard to estimate and know what's gonna happen." And I felt, or like, yeah, there was a lot there.
It seems like a lot of money just to keep people safe to an event that you're trying to make money at.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody done with the agricultural society? Tiny tots, I guess this is in kind?
Yeah, it's waiver of the rental fees. It's for their stroller walk, basically. This, she submitted this fairly early on. We can add, have her, I think, I don't know fully, but I believe she's talked to Emily about the dates already. It's just not charging her for any of that, for using the main hall. It's up to you guys, if you're, want to do that. It's not a, it's separate from the other one, I guess, the other group requests for waiver, waiver of fees.
Well, we have, we have put a defined time limit on how long this agreement is going to go. And I know that they would, they would desperately love to get back into the school where they were before, but again, COVID hanging over our head.
It's not for the playgroup, sir, for what they're running that way. This is for something separate from that.
Oh.
The stroller walk around and things like that.
What's your pleasure?
Is this the tricathon?
Not just tricathon because they want it for two hours a week for 42 weeks. It's for their stroller walk, where they do walk, it's like a walking group inside. They're not even sure they're gonna be able to do it, but this was submitted in like December.
It's, it's a new, additional program from the regular programming that they're already paying rental for.
Yes, addition to that. And it's big room.
Do we have the capacity to allow them, you know, two hours a week for 42 weeks without impacting someone else? Do they, are they gonna put in a scheduled time that this is gonna take place or how is this gonna work?
I believe at the time they're working, right now they're working with Emily to book it out, but everything's so up in the air with, with the COVID, with COVID and what they can and can't do. She has, she has worked with them a little bit. It's not kind of kicking anyone else out because no one else knows whether they can be in or not. And it's kind of a first come, first served for booking at this point. It's my understanding from Emily. Counselor Latham has his hand up.
Go ahead, Richard.
Yeah, I just look at that and there's gonna be more cost to it than that. Who's gonna sanitize the toilets and the room before anybody else out of the community dare even go in there? So there's more to this than meets the eye. So I'd like everybody to think about that one, please.
Essentially, they're still using the washrooms for their regular programming, correct?
A few, the three, I think it's three days a week, so yes.
This would be on a day that they are doing their regular programming?
That I am not clear on. Because I believe when they're doing their, right now, the rules state when they're doing their regular programming, no one else is allowed in the building, which is why they don't do regular programming on Thursdays.
This would be a separate time through the chair, Counselor Rowe. This would be a separate time. This wouldn't be, this wouldn't happen concurrently with the, with the program that's in there right now.
What's, what's your pleasure? Do we need a little bit more information on?
Counselor Taya has raised her hand as well, sir.
Hey, go ahead, Tress.
Hi, through the chair, I think they have in their agreement currently, but correct me if I'm wrong, Lee, if we have the, in there that they're to do the cleaning, is that correct? Right now with the two to three days a week they're in?
The, the program that's currently in there, the three days, that's actually part of their, that's part of their commitment or what they have to do for the province. So they, they are doing cleaning of the washrooms currently.
Okay, so the cleaning part of it that Deputy Mayor Latham brought up, maybe if we went ahead with this, they could include the cleaning in that as well?
And Counselor Cameron has her hand up as well.
Angela.
Oh, the health center runs a stroller or did run a stroller walk program. I'm concerned this is a duplication of a program that's already being run in the municipality. So I guess I'm, as the mayor brought up, I'm kind of looking for clarification that it's not overlapping an already existing program. Because I know the health center, when they were running it, rotated it between West Lauren and Rodney, where the locations were.
I can request more information to be brought back to, I can, our next budget meeting from tiny tots if you wish. verification on what programs they want to run during those periods of time and timing, like some more details. Would you prefer, would you like that?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if she's, if this is to try and do the playgroups similar to what they had previously done a couple days a week or a couple hours as before.
I will bring that back, I'll get some more information and bring that back.
And through the chair, if I could add, since we are getting more information on this, as you noticed, this request is for 42 weeks and it's, if it's just for the stroller walk, I know that public health encourages people to stay outside and get fresh air, daily exercise. Why, I, and I understand winter, cold weather, rainy days, but 42 weeks, that's, you know, this looks like the only time they will not be using rec center is just the July months, July and August. So I think if it's just the stroller walk, shouldn't we encourage public to go outside?
That's a good point.
That was kind of what I was thinking too, that'd be the last place I'd want to. If I could be outside, I wouldn't want to be walking around in the community center. So I think we need a little bit more information of just exactly what's going on.
Unfortunately, her, unfortunately, yeah, her, her application doesn't provide any more detail. I just tried to get into it. So I'll definitely have to all, all touch base with Shelley and get some more information then. Okay, so we'll go back to that. Now we're on back as page, triconnal.
Okay, what's your pleasure here?
Counselor Rowe has her hand up.
Yeah, through the chair, if I could just get some clarification. It sounded like to me when I read this program that they're still planning to access the 3,000 that we assigned last year, is that correct?
I got confused about that as well, Counselor Rowe, and I followed up with them. They, we've already issued the check and sent them the $3,000. It's sitting in an account earmarked for the specific project for, that deals with the West Algen. It has not been fully utilized, no, they have not done, because of COVID, they have not spent any of it.
Okay.
I thought that was for assistance in the reprint of the pioneer days.
No, we paid for that directly. This one was $3,000 awarded to them for their, it was a display related to West Algen.
Okay, I think, is everybody familiar with the Fleming component of this?
Yep.
Okay, you're, you're aware of the cemetery down by the Thames River? Where the, it's the Fleming family cemetery and it was, I think, the first, first child born in, I think it might be Algen County, back in the 1700s. I'd have to, I'd have to refresh my memory, but it's fairly, it's fairly significant part of Algen County history that is located in West Algen. And I think this is something that the, that triconnal is, is trying to work to educate people on the fact that this happened. This Fleming come up the Thames River in the late 1700s and settled in West Algen. And I think it was certainly long before Algen County even existed.
I don't see anybody else, anybody else have any comments, or?
Okay, everybody comfortable with the request then?
It appears so, sir.
All right, well, we will move on to West Lauren Horticultural Society.
I just, I want to clarify something with that one. You'll see their original request is slightly, their requesting paperwork also lists out the hanging baskets. We are, that's already built into our recreation budget. So I did speak to their president and he understands that we are paying for the hanging baskets. And in the past, we also gave them an extra $800 for bedding plants because they don't get as many hanging baskets in West Lauren as the Rodney one did. And so it was leveled out. We just, what we did, I just laid that out there, I wanted you to be aware of that. And Counselor Rowe has her hand up, sir.
So I need some clarification. We had two, two different applications from the West Lauren Horticultural Society. And so I'm not, I'm not entirely sure what the total amount is that they're asking for. Could you clarify that? I wasn't sure whether it was 2,000 for adding flowers to the centennial garden and a bench, and then another 2,000 for?
No, it's eight, so they want $2,000 for the centennial garden and benches, is my understanding, total. And then another 800 for bedding plants. Just, I'm gonna stop my share and go into their application and just, they want, they've asked, yes, $2,000 is what they've asked to complete the centennial garden project, which includes benches, flowers, that sort of thing. And then the other request, they thought they had to include the hanging baskets and the fertilizer and all of that such things. But we don't need, that they were, they are being, I made them aware that we've already budgeted for the hanging baskets. So now they're asking, they just want to make sure that we're still comfortable, besides just hanging baskets, that they get the bedding plants.
Well, it seems like a pretty good deal for the municipality that if all we have to provide is the bedding plants and someone else is gonna plant them and maintain them.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Lee, we plant and maintain them, they just pick them out.
No, the bedding plants are planted and maintained by the Horticultural Society. Well, they're planted by the Horticultural Society, we would, we water them.
And weed them or just water them?
Just water them.
Okay, well.
I just had some confusion because one of the applications talked about the centennial garden and then the other one talked about recognition. And so it just sounded like there were two different requests. But if the total amount is 2,800 for that list of requests, then I'm fine with that.
And just so you know, I did double check that with, I went through each group, with each group when I summarized this. So I believe so, Counselor Cameron has her hand up, sir.
Angela?
Yeah, I have the same kind of confusion as Counselor Rowe because the, the grant that I read made reference to requests for money for a sign for recognition. So, and I had the same question with the total amount that they were asking for because two years ago, we gave them $10,000 for that project. So I'm a little confused as to why they're coming back wanting additional funding.
So their grant tells me they are asking for a bench for public seating, a purchase of some sort of plaque or sign to identify the donations from the municipality and possibly add to the garden area along with the plaque. That's the exact wording.
And that was for $2,000 for that?
Correct.
So that's?
Had it be billed directly to the municipality for the savings on HST.
And I think the 800 in bedding plants is for the welcome signs and other areas.
Correct.
Village, so.
Yes.
So their annual contribution to the welcome signs, I fully support and I welcome that, but we've already given them $10,000 towards the centennial garden project that they've done. And I'm not in favor of giving them any further municipal dollars towards that project.
Bonnie?
Yeah, we had mentioned about offering a bench that was already available that wasn't being used. I think it's at the arena, is it still available to offer? I mean, there will be costs in cementing it in or whatever you have to do with benches.
That I'm not sure of, I would have to look into that further.
Well, if you, if you look at that area the way it is, it's just like, kind of an oversized sidewalk. And I, I think that there's a rationale to, to at least consider putting some type of bench in there or benches in there for people to go and sit down because it is kind of a nice area and it's on our main corner. Whether they come from somewhere else or council, council puts the benches in, I don't think we have any other benches on the downtown West Lauren for people to congregate and sit at.
And sir, just remember though, we have the money in there for an electronic sign. And at one point, that was the location we were looking at to put the electronic sign.
Okay.
Because that's a, it's our, our property, it has the electronics.
Well, then we can put a bench in there and have people so they can sit and read. Well, then we can put a bench in there and have people so they can sit and read the sign as it, as it goes from issue to issue. Whatever council feels is their comfort level.
I just caution with giving money for something like benches if they're going to cement them in and then we're going to have to rip them out to put in a sign.
Okay. Well, let's see, there you go. That's why we have these meetings to get things in, in order. Do you want to defer the bench for the meantime? Is that, is that your recommendation for an electric, electronic sign to be put in that, that area, Lee? Is that the?
Well, we had talked about that briefly. I think there's a few spots in the downtown core that we could look at for that sign. There is an electronic sign just around the corner, adjacent to the, just past, before they get to the monument by the library. So you would have two electronic signs within 50 feet of each other. And I don't know, you know, is that, is an electronic sign going to take away from the idea of the garden area? But I think there's a few spots in town that we could look at.
Richard?
Through the chair. I, I, I see what you mean by putting that sign on that. But you know, putting a sign on that corner is taking people's eyes off the road, which is a pretty dangerous road right now. There was talks and arguments about putting traffic lights there years ago. We don't want to go there right now. But I think it's not the best place to put an electric sign. People will be looking up, trying to read the sign and bang. So I think we should look for a better place than that.
Certainly, I can just visualize the electronic sign that the library's got, but if it's like the one in West Lauren or the one in Rodney, you almost have to stop and actually read it word by word as the information goes by you. Teresa?
Through the chair, there's also an electronic sign outside the West Elgin Community Health Center along Main Pioneer there, too, at that corner. So you triplicate, you put one on that corner. It is a good spot. I agree with Deputy Mayor Latham that, yeah, it would take the eyes off the road if people are reading it as they're driving. So Mr. Gosnell said there, there's other spots we can put it. So I'd be okay with maybe for going the bench right now. Just going ahead with the other stuff and leaving the bench for a little bit or to think on it for maybe another year or just even just to think on it.
Do you sense us on that proposal?
I would go along with that proposal.
Okay. Everybody else happy with that?
I guess we could offer the, if we have a spare bench, we could offer what we have as an alternative. But we would like to have some input as to where it's placed, just in terms of because of the signs.
Okay, everybody happy with that? Yes, Teresa?
So I'm confused. What were we doing then?
So we're giving them $800 for the bedding plants and deferring the, any donations toward the Centennial Garden at this time. And Lee is going to investigate if we have a spare bench to add to that area. And if they do, we would make sure we place it due to the idea that if we want that area for a sign, yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to have some clarification. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Are we done with that?
Back to, we're on West Elgin Legion. So this was just a quick email. As, because of COVID, they weren't able to update their furnace. They want to make sure that the $3,000 gets moved into, they, they can still use it because they, they know they don't get the money until the work is done and they submit for it at that point. And we all know they're going to have to have some extensive fixes at this point anyway because of some insurance issues. So that's where we're at.
What's your pleasure?
Councilor Cameron has her hand up.
Go ahead, Angela.
Based on the Legion's rough year, I'm more than in favor of rolling last year's money forward for them.
Counselor Calle and then Counselor Rowe.
Through the chair, yeah, 100% support this. They're going through a big, rough patch like many service groups and associations right now. And I mean, they can't be without a furnace. So I'd be in favor of pushing this ahead to 2021 and going ahead with it.
Bonnie?
Yeah, when I checked my notes, I had 5,000 that we granted them last year. Am I mistaken there?
3,000 of it was for the furnace. That's she, what she asked for was three grand, 3,000. Let me just get this, sorry, I'll go look at council grants from last year.
The total need is 17,000, as I recall from last year's request. And I thought that we had 5,000 there.
I just want to make sure here. I'm just opening up the summary from last year, what we gave them. What was given and what was? Oh, there is. They requested five, you're right. I'm a letter.
Gave me three.
I think we gave them three.
They didn't take advantage of the three?
They weren't able to do any work because of the, because of COVID-19. Yeah, we gave them three. We did not give them five. They requested five. We gave them three. And they were, funds were to be provided upon proof of the purchase of the furnace. They were not able to, that was what it was. They were not able to purchase it due to, and haven't installed or anything due to all of the restrictions. It hadn't, they haven't been able to be, we issued these grants, don't forget, the letter's the first of March. And everything closed down within weeks, right? They have, they only opened for a very short period in the fall. So they have not been able to do any of the work or even get anyone in to look at the building. Deputy Mayor Latham?
Go ahead, Richard.
Yep. Okay, we, we saw good enough to let them have, to offer them 3,000 last year. Or unfortunately, they didn't have to, they didn't use it. So I feel, I don't feel a problem at all with allowing them the same amount this year. So I'm all in favor of carrying on with the 3,000.
Everybody happy with that? Hearing, hearing no objection?
Go on to the optimists.
We'll go on to the optimist's requests.
Okay, Counselor Calle, or Counselor Cameron has left. So, yep, so this is, I mean, obviously, they don't know what, what's going to happen. They're hoping to host a car show and we give them $500 just as a check every year for that. Mother's Day Road Race, we have always, they submit receipts to us and we cap our donation at 1,500. The same idea with the Santa Claus Parade. Last year's funds for the Santa Claus Parade were rolled into the Festival of Lights and they did not have a road race. I do believe they are planning on het, on moving forward with some sort of virtual version of the road race. That's what I know.
I might enter this here.
Counselor Rowe has her hand up, sir.
Bonnie?
Um, the West Lauren Santa Claus Parade, I thought that that was already assigned in our Parks and Recreation Program budget. 5,000.
Lee, can you answer that question?
Sorry, through the chair, I, I don't believe it's always been the West Lauren Santa Claus Parade because it was put on by a, the optimist was always allocated out of council grants. The Christmas parade that shows under, in the budget was from, was for the Rodney Santa Claus Parade because that was put on by municipal staff, by the municipality.
Yeah, there's 3,000 in the Christmas Parade budget. So, and that's for Rodney's or for?
So.
5,000, isn't it?
Yeah, there's 5,000 in there, yeah.
So is there, has there been any discussion with anybody about continuing on with a joint something or other? I think that was very well received last year.
Um, the topic was broached with the optimist. At this point, we haven't had any indication from them whether they wish to continue this way or whether they want to go back to having a separate function.
My, I, my request for them of their, for their grants was, we want whatever we got last year. That was basically what I got told. So that's why it was put on there. And Counselor Calle has got her hand raised.
Go ahead, Teresa.
Uh, through the chair, because they're such small villages, I think we had discussion before, if my recollection is correct. I believe Mayor McPhil came up with this, that we could do one one year, one the next to offset it and it'd still be a bit of a lower budget, still something happened with it. Had that discussion come any further with the optimists? Was it still to be separate? I just know we'd had a discussion, not even before COVID came to be a little late. So, yeah, I'm okay with the Mother's Day Road Race because my understanding was the same as Clerk Nethercott's, that they were doing something virtually. And the car show, maybe they can do something if we're still in the situation we're in now. They could do something distanced and limit how many people go through gates or something at some point. And the Santa Claus Parade to me, for such a small community to have two of them just seems a little bit, I don't know what the word would be, but just a little bit much. Really, as Mayor McPhil and other councils, councillors have said, we really had a great response to the Festival of Lights we had that the staff and other, and optimists and such put together. So I just, I don't know, I'm fine with the first two, the car show and the road race, but maybe more discussion or clarification on the Santa Claus Parade to have two separate ones.
How, do you want Lee to, oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor Latham's got his hand up.
I would agree with what Teresa just said. And I think we really should go towards the amalgamation of these, either one at one place and one at the other year, opposite years, or even go to that Festival of Lights. But one always takes off the other and I think it's about time we joined. It isn't Rodney and West Lauren anymore, it's West Elgin. So I think we should talk more about that.
So would you like recreation staff to have the conversation with them before you approve any money? But you'll approve the, basically the $2,000 for the road race and car show added together? Is that what you're saying? Is that what you'd like us to respond to them?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you know, just kind of jumping in here that the, the $2,200 for the Santa Claus Parade, when we're not really sure just exactly what is, what the future holds for it, it's not a whole lot of money and can it be tentatively put in there pending the, pending the results of further negotiations? And at least, at least Magna knows that the money is set aside. If we use it, we use it. If we don't use it, it's, it's still sitting there.
Counselor Calle has her hand up, sir.
Yes, Teresa?
Through the chair, yeah, I'd put a paste, placeholder in would be great for that. And kind of like when we had our discussions, what I caught of it, because my screen froze. In regards to the Agricultural Society, the Rodney Agricultural, we don't have a crystal ball, as we all know. We don't know what could be going on. That money could be used, could not be used. Kind of like the Legion last year, they weren't able to use that money, so they brought it forward. So, yeah, to put a placeholder in would just make sense, sense in this situation. I, that's my opinion.
Hey, everybody happy with the West Lauren Optimist?
Okay, so then our last one is the West Lauren Lawn Bowling.
Operating expenses due to COVID-19.
Yes, they'd like, they weren't able, the basic idea was they were not able to operate much last year. So they need some funding towards their operational expenses for next year because they don't really have anywhere to go from.
Okay.
Counselor Rowe has her hand up, sir.
Okay.
Yes, I note, as I was looking at this request, I noted that, you know, they, they took the initiative and got another grant towards the tractor. And so we didn't need to grant them as much last year. And I think my understanding was that they are hoping for the ability to do tournaments again this year. And so their supplies for PPE and that kind of thing are likely to increase for those types of events. So I would support this request.
Any other comments?
Doesn't appear to be.
Do we get Angela back yet?
Yes, she's back. Oh, she's got her hand raised now, sir.
All right, that's what I was missing. Angela?
Through the chair, is there any grants that they can apply for or they're not that typical club that they can get funding?
Oh, they apply for grants. They, they actually have, they got a grant to buy their tractor last year. As for COVID-related expenses, they don't qualify for the ones that have been announced so far.
That was my question, is do they qualify for the COVID grants?
Not the same one that the Fair Board and the Horticultural Society are, are able to apply for.
Okay, with that being said, then I would support some, supporting them.
Any other comments? I think that gets us to the, oh, another question that Angela?
So through the chair, we're, I see we're at the end of council grants and I, I wanted to bring something up for us to consider this year that we're in budget deliberations. As you've said last week in the meeting that the transfer payments could potentially stop next year. And I wonder if we should consider changing our council grants process for next year and putting a cap on the amounts of requests. Because we are going to have some very tough decisions to make for next year. And I wanted to know if council was receptive to considering that process. We don't have to do it right now in budget deliberations, but I just wanted to put it out there because we all know that next year's budget deliberations are going to be extremely hard.
What's your thoughts? Bonnie?
Yeah, I would agree that some caps might be a good idea, potentially. You know, I'd like to go back through our granting application process and see if there's, you know, different parameters for each type of grant or whatever. But worthwhile looking at again, for sure.
So I'll bring, we can probably bring back a report. I know you guys updated the way you do it at the county. So I can even go contact Lee and see if I can get some more information on how they do it.
Yeah, they, they have a matrix that they, they score each, each request has to meet certain thresholds. And then, you know, someone could request a grant for $10,000. And as they go through the, as they go through the process, it, it might end up at $7,500. I think it's fairly, a fairly labor-intensive.
Yeah, it's very labor-intensive at all. That is one, one thing. It's not very labor-intensive. I can maybe do some research on some other options, like what other municipalities do, what types of grants they award compared to municipalities, more so than even someone as large as the county.
I think, I, I think the county's ultimate goal is, is to get out of the grant business altogether. A lot of counties are at that level now. They, they don't entertain grant requests. So I think that's the direction that they're trying to go. I think that's the direction that they're trying to go, but time will tell. So now that we got to the end of that, Jan is going to look into it a little bit for everybody to see if there is an alternative. Anything else anybody has got regarding council grants?
Just so you know, I will bring this back before each. With the updates, the information that is required, before we finalize the awarding of each individual grant and submit, let's send out letters.
Magna, what is the total grant in the budget? I know we have 4, 4,800 committed, do we have any wiggle room for things that come along over the course of the year?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor, I added additional $10,000 into the budget. For additional requests throughout the year.
Everybody satisfied with that? Okay. All right, well, we've got that, that segment nailed down. Are you ready for a break yet, or do you want to keep on rolling?
How much more time does Magna need?
Um, well, we can just finish administration and then. We can take a break. Basically, for administration, so I would like to go over through. Invests potential projects listed. No, scroll the other way.
No, is it here?
Yep, keep going.
One more page?
Note five.
Oh, note five, sorry.
So is there anything on that list that council would like to eliminate? Or is there anything that you'd like to add?
Sorry, you kind of broke up, Magna, could you repeat that?
Okay, so basically, I would like to go to. Improve service delivery and efficiency grant, and I would like to know if there is anything missing. If there's any potential projects that council have in mind that are missing. Or is there anything that council would like to remove from proposed projects that I have listed?
Well, Magna, do you, do you feel that all? We're at the top of our game when it comes to having the necessary software that is going to get us to. Hopefully, at some point in time, as least. Reliance on paper and. You know, everything can be immediately put into digital instead of, of a paper trail?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I am a strong believer of automation. If there is a system in place that can be replaced by manual. Labor. I will go for it.
Sir, Councilor Hammer has her hands raised.
Yes, Angela.
Is there keyless entry in all of our buildings now for that 20,000? Or are there other buildings within the municipality that we could use part of the balance for?
No, so that keyless access at $20,000 that you, that is listed. It, it's just the cost for, to cover in a small office, box shop. And purchase. Then that software, so basically, our employees with the swipe into the door, the software would take attendance.
So perhaps maybe we could do. The arena or the, the two fire halls. For some of that money, and that would give us a better tracking system of who's coming in and out of the buildings.
Yeah, we certainly do arena and perhaps. Parks and recreation shops, so that would eliminate. Hanging around to the keys and, you know. As far as the fire hall, I, it was recommended to me not to change current system to swipe-in system as. You know, when the firemen receive a fire call, if they forget their swipe card, they won't be able to get into the fire hall, so I mean. You know, punching the code is so much easier and eliminates problems to the firefighters.
The other thing that popped into my head for efficiencies was Jackie's software system that we're getting her. Could that fall into this system?
Yes, yes, it will be fall into that system, and we could. Allocate 20, 22 cost as well.
Well, did, did you not say that's a yearly licensing fee that we're going to have to pay?
Yes.
So that it will go on even, even when the efficiency funds are. The efficiency funds are depleted, it will still be an ongoing cost as long as we take advantage of the software?
Yes.
So at some point in time, it will, it will have to be levied across the general tax levy.
Yes.
Any other comments on? Magnus?
Councilor Row has her hand up.
Okay, Bonnie?
So just to clarify, this balance of 164, you are trying to use that up? Or at least have, have that amount assigned to items for this budget year, so that we qualify then for the next grant application level?
That's correct, we don't have this money. It's not, whatever we allocate today is not etched in stone that we have to spend the money for. However, we have to have plans towards the use of the funds.
And I, I want everyone to know that Laserfish software, that's, that's in the idea of improving our record keeping and turning it all electronic. And it is significantly cheaper at the 10,000 than originally thought, because it's now cloud-based, and this is a new. Brand-new cutting-edge coming out that Magna and I found, so.
Also, I will be adding probably another $30,000 towards asset management. As we will be required to basically get help from other consulting. Firms to complete the asset management implementation. For example, we will be using StreetScan. It's the company that scans the roads, all kinds of roads, and, you know, determines the state our roads are in.
So I'm just thinking through the chair. You know, having just had this question posed, I haven't had a chance to go through all the rest of the budgets, but, but are there other departments where. Particular capital projects could end up out of this. Fund rather than. You know, their own budget or their own reserves and. That sort of thing.
What I would like to suggest, I was going to kind of revisit this issue with staff internally. Talk to Lee to see if there is any needs for additional software in the water department or, or parks and wrecks. And, and come back with a proposal at the budget meeting.
I, I think that's the best way forward. Certainly, put it out there to our department heads that. Is there something that will. Efficient, make your department more efficient that's available, and certainly we can, we can determine that when it's presented to us. Somebody happy with that?
Yeah, can I speak for a second?
Yes, go ahead, Richard.
Yeah, I was just looking at that list, and actually, I looked at electronic signs plus two. 82,000. Now, I don't know whether, what sort of quality they are, but I was looking at the school grant there, and theirs comes, if they bought two of theirs, it costs 76.
We, we based ours on what Dutton Dunwich, and we included having to build a base and do all the electronic work, where I believe the school already has the base. And have someone willing to do their electronic work for free.
Okay, we need extra work then, okay, thank you.
I know that the Dutton sign has a tremendous amount of information on it. I took the opportunity the other day to, to watch it in operation, and yeah, it's, I think quite effective of getting, getting a message out to people when. You know, we somewhat struggle trying to do that.
Yep.
Okay, well, if we can.
I have one more comment.
Yep, go ahead, Bonnie.
I'm just glancing again over the definition of the use of these, and it does refer to service delivery, improved service delivery. And so rather than just the efficiency, there's two parts to the grant, and so, you know, things like. Speed signs and better signage at entrances to the municipality. Things like that might fit the grant as well, I think. It, it, there is a, in the Roads Department budget, isn't there a speed sign amount? Posted there, and.
We're looking for, for two electronic speed signs?
Yeah, so that might fit the requirement, and, and also I would really and dearly love to see better signage for our municipality. On entering the municipality, so I know that's, that could be a big budget item, but. Another idea to improve service. I guess that's a stretch, but. Might fit.
Well, why don't we let Magna work with the staff and take into consideration some of the suggestions that council has put out, and come back to our next meeting with some ideas?
Sure.
That work for you, Magna?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, everybody's back. Okay, what do you want to do now?
So we're, I assume we're done with administration, does anybody have any questions or final comments?
I think. I see none, so. What do you have to do now? A break? Well, looks like we got everybody back. Everybody have their peanut butter sandwich? Okay, Magna, where do you want to go now?
Okay, so.
I'd so be there.
So I suggest that we start at the beginning and go through miscellaneous revenue.
Okay.
There is not a lot of changes, just, I would like to provide council with quick explanation as interest as the numbers are. If you look at, so the is 160, 160, 110. We are budgeting $60,000 for 2021 budget, but actuals are showing. Revenue of 95,000, so. I just want you to know that year-end entry hasn't been done yet, and that $95,000 will. Decrease by approximately $30,000 as. We allocate bank interest that we get to restricted reserves, so basically. We allocate interest to West Lauren and Rodney Stewidge Provincial Gas Tax, that are gas tax, water. And the trailer park. So, oh, and Tri-County has the, the reserves, so that's why it's kind of. Looks quite high right now at this point. Another. Account that I would like to bring your attention to is grants. That's the new one that we have applied, ICIP COVID Stream Local Government. So this is the grant that we have just submitted for our office renovations. We're hoping to hear back by the end of March. And the last one is transfer to reserves, $225,000. That's the OSIF grant that we get annually, that money goes, gets allocated to Rodney Stewidge. That's all I have. For miscellaneous revenue, does anybody have any questions?
See none, carry on.
Council is next.
So in the order I have council, councils the next page, oh, yeah, sorry.
So we just look a little bit higher as council recalls, we changed the council's remuneration. So that change is reflected in our budget. We're not allocating a lot of money for conferences and seminars. Mileage, we're estimating to be low. As all our meetings are, will be probably too soon for quite some time. Recognition awards, there is an explanation, that's the money we allocate towards hams and turkeys. Years of service awards and Christmas party, I allocated. $1,000 more than we had in the budget of 2020. And the reason for it is because last year we included fire department. For the purchase of hams and turkeys, so that's why I've increased that amount. And I am transferring $10,000 to reserves to cover the cost of our, of upcoming election. Does anybody have any questions?
Carry on, I don't see, do you see anything, Dana?
No, sir, there is none that I see.
Okay, just pipe up if somebody sticks their hand up and.
Next one is municipal building. As you can see. There is no wages. Under municipal building, as you know, we have. Cleaning, janitorial company cleaning our municipal office and libraries, so we no longer employ janitors. The rest is pretty much in line with, the rest of 2020 budget is pretty much in line with 2020 actuals. And we are budgeting municipal office renovations. We're estimating the cost will be in a range of $300,000. $200,000 will come out of reserves, and we're hoping for that grant that we applied for. So we can cover the cost entirely. Under my notes, so currently, as of. January 20th, January 1st of 20. 21, we have $565,000 in reserves for our municipal buildings. And we're in 2021, we're planning on removing, moving 200,000 out of these reserves, so we're going to be left with $365,000.
Questions? With the office renovations, is there any available money out of the accessibility grants for the certainly the washrooms?
I believe we applied for accessible Jenna last year. We were.
We did apply for it as part of it, but yet we didn't. We were not successful. We applied. We chose to apply for the bigger amount for the whole building versus the small twenty thousand dollars just for the washrooms and to improve accessibility, and we were not successful.
Okay, and looked into that. Any other questions for Magna on this on this slide?
Okay, so the next one is Old Town Home. As you can see, the cost allocated to in twenty twenty one it is down to a bare minimum. Utilities and small purse. We are also transferring money to reserves as we have for for the grant for the refurbishment of this Old Town Hall building. Right now we have no plans to do anything with this building for this year at least.
Any questions, sir? Seeing none, next slide.
Next one is police services. This year, we're budgeting nine hundred seventy two thousand dollars in police services. Our cost basically averages to I believe it was three hundred and ten dollars per for property owner. So we have no control over it and court cost that I'm not even sure what that amount is going to be. Basically, that number was taken from twenty twenty budget. We haven't saved bill from the county, the actual court cost for twenty twenty yet. That usually comes at the end of our first quarter.
Would it would it be reasonable that we undertake a social media campaign regarding nine one one calls that are accidentally sent in? As the inspector did mention to us, what the cost of those calls are, I think that's something that you know, we should try to share with the public so they're aware and try to be.
Their media advisor is getting me some stuff for that after our meeting with Inspector Butler, and he is delivering the pamphlets this week. So they'll go into the tax bill.
Okay, and can we do something on social media too?
Yeah, he's getting me the the mockups and things like that. He's got to email them to me. So, yeah, it's better off to stick with their their messaging. So we follow the same messaging that rest of the province does. So we are, I am in working with them and they've got Meg and I on their portal and things like that. So, yeah, we're working on it. I did already have one. I don't know if you noticed last week about I'm basically programming in something once a week with them related to different things for the police that you can report stolen items or things online. It's a series of things that we're working on.
Cool. Okay, no. Anybody got any questions on police services? Next slide, Megan.
Next one is conservation authority. Surprisingly, the cost is going down by point six eight percent or four hundred thirty six dollars. So this year we're budgeting four hundred thirty six dollars less.
Okay. Any questions to that? Next slide.
And next one, emergency measures. As you can see, I did not budget anything. That shared services agreement that we have with the county, I think it ends in September. But I am being optimistic and I am hoping that we can extend that at least for the rest of the year. See, right now, we're kind of playing by the bar and to see how things are will evolve. As you recall, that shared services agreement was put in place on a pilot basis. So I think down the road, the termination will be made as to the future existence of CMC.
I think there's a commitment from County Council to to try to put as many of these shared services agreements in place as we possibly can over the next over the next number of years. And certainly, this is this is low hanging fruit that hopefully we can take advantage of. Okay, by law enforcement.
By law enforcement, I am budgeting hours for our by law officer at this point. I'm not. I believe that should be enough. However, with, you know, COVID and unexpected issues, we might end up spending a little bit more money, but it's been, as you can see, in the prior years, it's the cost of employing by law officer has been very consistent.
Questions on by law? Seeing none, next slide.
The next slide is animal control. So as council recalls, we have, we started three year dog tags back in twenty nineteen. So twenty twenty one is the third year of the dog tags. So that kind of eliminated our animal control officers going door to door and selling the dog tags. There is a huge say cost savings in that initiative. As you can see, for the last three, we're in year two. Last year, last year, we based on our twenty twenty actuals, we will, we will be able to move fifteen almost sixteen thousand dollars to reserves. So what we're saving is the twenty five percent cost that we had to allocate based of what revenue was generated from dog sales. So that money is being transferred to reserve for future dog park or or if council has any other ideas on use of that money.
Oh, sorry, I haven't made it.
So the plan is not to send Vicki for one more year and then after three years, maybe send her again door to door and inspect for dog tags.
I just wanted also to be aware that yet another municipality in Southern Ontario, a little larger than us, have actually gone away from dog tags because they find they're more expensive and they're not worth the money. And instead, and animal bylaw is considered part of by law enforcement and added to the general tax levy. Woodstock just did it. There was a big article that went out on the municipal broadcast. Strathroy has done it. There's a lot of municipalities that are moving that way. Medium municipal, medium to small municipalities as well because of the actual cost of tags and most owners have their own, they're not used to find dogs anymore like they were. Most owners have their own tracking put in.
I think that's that's going to be the way of the future. And certainly, I think let's just keep an eye on that moving forward because you're right. The number of the number of dog issues that a tag solves is very small as compared to the necessity to send the by law officer to deal with it. So we'll keep an eye on that going forward. Maggie, you want to finish up with something?
Yeah, no, I was gonna mention that this is going that's going to go to council probably this year near the end of the year for consideration. As there is, yeah, our staff spends a lot of hours with dealing with customers, you know, arguing, you know, who's got dog, who doesn't? And then, you know, why are you charging me this? And then, you know, transferring unpaid dog tags to taxation. You know, for the amount of revenue that we're generating, it is just not worth going with that kind of system. And it does make sense to move it over to a general tax rate as pretty much every resident benefits from it.
Oh, we can look forward to a report coming at some time in the future.
I'm gonna turn it over to Lee.
Hey, through the chair, you'll notice under Rhodes Municipal, under the revenue side of that, there's really, most of that is straightforward. The only thing you'll see there that differs from previous years is that gain loss of asset disposal. So we will have an old roadside mower, which isn't worth a lot, but we do have a tandem axle snowplow. That is the new truck is expected and it's been pushed off. This is the one that was ordered in February of twenty twenty. It's been pushed out now till the end of April, first part of May of twenty twenty one. So we'll have that tandem axle truck to sell once the new one arrives. So that's where the twenty seven thousand five hundred comes in under revenue. I guess as we go down through the list here, one thing I'll say with both the municipal roads budget and the county roads budget, you'll see more labor in those in those two budgets this year than we have in past years. That is because we are not doing any major capital works as far as our roads public works department is concerned. So therefore, this is more going to be more of a maintenance year for us. And therefore, those wages will be allocated out over these maintenance accounts more than they have in past years. The one thing as we scroll down Janet, to the bottom of that first page is the D three, the dust layer materials, the last line on the first Rhodes Municipal page. That's been changed to a hundred and eighty thousand from it's been upgraded, I guess, or updated from the hundred and thirty that was originally in there. We've, we've put out, the tender is out now for that. But in speaking with the suppliers over the last few weeks since the middle of January, there is going to be a substantial increase this year in the cost of the dust suppressant. So we had to add extra money into that account. One other thing you'll note on the start of the next page there, that two hundred and fifty thousand that's in red highlighted, we just wanted to show you. We with the construction in Rodney this year, we were looking for ways to try and get pared down expenditures to put all of the available funds into that project. So one place we were able to achieve that was on our maintenance gravel. So that D five gravel resurfacing is the gravel that we purchased to put down on the roads. Typically, we purchase twenty typically, we pretend for twenty five thousand tones. Twenty thousand of that is put towards maintenance gravel and five thousand of that is usually dedicated towards capital projects. Last year, because we didn't do any capital with COVID, we took advantage of the fact that we did have that twenty five thousand tendered. And we put that extra five thousand tone of gravel on the roads last year. So this year that allows us, we're actually going to tender for fifteen thousand tone this year instead of twenty five. So that's why you see quite a decrease in that cost of gravel that we're going to purchase this year. Um, I think for the most part, other than that, as far as municipal roads go, just in the notes here at the bottom, you'll see there that disposal of truck twelve, which is that gain loss signage, so that safety material, we spoke about that. That's road signs that we're going to update this year. Those two radar speed signs that we've talked about for use around the municipality and also sign inventory and reflectivity assessment done by a third party that ties in both to asset management and our requirement under MMS to to do that reflectivity assessment on an annual basis. And then the the training we've left in is just the standard training that we need to have on on an annual basis, such as our health and safety and first aid. Is there any questions on municipal roads before I go on to county roads?
Questions from anyone?
Bonnie has a question, sir.
Go ahead, Bonnie.
So just in reference to note three here. Were these were some of these amounts that we talked about potentially coming from the remainder of the efficiency grant that?
Yeah, I think there was mention of the radar speed signs. We would have to review the criteria for that grant to see if those would see if those would fall, I guess, within the scope of that. But that would be, I think that's what we was mentioned earlier today, was those two radar speed signs.
And the other signage that you referred to, what what signs is that for?
So the road signs are just the regulatory and caution signs. Counselor Row, we we have signs that like I said, this year is going to be a maintenance year for us here because we're not doing any capital projects. So we have there's some areas around the municipality where we would like to actually update the signage to make sure that it conforms with current standards. So that would be replacement of signs that are found to be defective as far as reflectivity out of the assessment as well as new signs to bring up some of those area other areas to to conform to current standards.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I'm just wondering, Lee, under the public works shed proposal that you've got, is that that's something that the overall operation of the of the roads department in, you know, increasing the efficiency efficiency of the overall operation by making more room within the existing facilities to better utilize it and because as you mentioned, that it's very, very crowded when all the equipment is in that barn. Is there any any way that that seventy five thousand can be can be attributed to road department efficiency improvements?
Um, yeah, I actually, I think that we could probably, we could probably make the argument for for an efficiency portion to that upgrade of the shed.
Well, certainly, I think if anybody questioned it, when you've got all the chickens in the barn, it's the existing works garage. It is quite a struggle to get from one side of the building to the other side of the building.
Yeah, I think we can look at that moving forward.
Then getting back to Megan, would that change our bottom line if that was something that that could be put under that heading?
Absolutely, by one percent.
Yeah, exactly. What's what's council's thoughts on that? Yeah, exactly. What's, what's council's thoughts on that?
Councilor Row.
Sorry, I should just pipe up. Yes, that, that makes sense to me. On the outside, anyway, it sounds as though it would make the spaces more efficient for employees to carry out their work.
Well, it's, it's, it's a long-term solution too. It's, it's not just something that is going to benefit in the short term. I certainly see the wisdom and, you know, proceeding under Lee's thoughts on doing this. I, I think it's a good move for the municipality going forward. So we'll leave that with Lee and Magna to see if it fits under that, under that heading. And Bonnie, you got another question?
I do. Through the chair, with regard to the Blacks Road reconstruction project, I see last year we budgeted 125, not sure how much went toward that, but is the only portion of that project going to be the culvert replacement this year? Is that the only portion?
Through the chair, there's actually two projects there that kind of encompass Blacks Road. So the 125,000 that was budgeted last year under Blacks Road reconstruction is actually for the portion of Blacks Road from Highway 401 South to Queens Line. That's going to be, have improved drainage. The road base is, is in good shape now, but that would be, that was slated to be converted over to surface treatment or tar and chip, which obviously didn't happen last year. And in light of the construction in Rodney this year, like I said, all of our public works capital jobs, you'll see also there the surface treating roads, the 200,000 we had budgeted last year for Marsh Line from Kerr Road to Graham Road, those projects are being pushed off another year just to provide that funding for Rodney. So the other portion of that is the the money that was, that's allocated for the, the job that is under the ICIP grant, which is Blacks Road from Highway 401 north to County Road 6 or Johnson Line. So that's what we had, that's, you'll see the culvert replacement, culvert number six replacement and green replacement, those projects. Also, just, we're still waiting for approval or working through the approval process for the bridge and culvert reconstruction jobs north of 401. So our feeling is that that probably is going to be pushed off until 2022 as well.
And if I could just follow up with that, so that, those funds have been, excuse me, received already, correct? And we're okay with them being kept in reserve until we can get to it?
No, those funds have not been received. So how the ICIP program works is as we, as we incur expenses with that program or with that project, I have to submit reports on that and we can claim back once receipts are provided. We can reclaim those expenses back as long as they qualify under the program. So we have just submitted for some money through that project for engineering costs, which we have started. But the money itself, I believe it was about 1.2 million that we received for that overall project. We have not received that money yet, but we have, under the project scope, we have six years to complete that job.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are we good up to this point in time?
Um, the roads under county is pretty straightforward. Typically, we like to balance that budget out every year. So you'll see there, there is a slight increase with, from the county for that 483,035.93 is what we will be getting this year from Elgin County to provide maintenance of their road network within West Elgin. And then that's pretty straightforward through those expense accounts. And you'll see there at the bottom, we balance that out to zero at the end of the year.
And through the chair, the only thing that I noticed in, in there was the hardtop was quite a bit higher than we had budgeted for.
Yeah, so in, in 2020, you're talking, Councilor Row?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, so what we did is last year, the county, it was in their capital plan to resurface County Road 9, which is McDougall and Stalker lines between Fernal Road and Graham Road. So in the scope of that capital project, the county had not allowed for, we'll call it pre-surfacing repairs, so fixing up the edge line, you know, filling some, leveling some wheel ruts and things like that. So we did that work in advance of the capital project and that's where that, that's what caused that account to be higher than budgeted for.
No one has their hand up, sir, so I think we can.
Okay, I was just, I was just going to mention that the way the funding, the way the funding works from the county is that we are allocated X amount of dollars as per kilometer of county roads that we maintain. And, you know, depending on the year, some years, we have a little bit better luck and it's usually whenever it comes to, to snow maintenance. So the, the county gives us those dollars and if we are under budget, the way the system is set up is that we keep that money. But if it's a situation where we are over budget, we don't get any more money. So it's, I think, very, very important that this accounting for county roads is kept, is kept up to date and we know exactly where we stand when it comes to those county maintenance agreement. Currently, there is a movement happening at county to revisit the way the lower tiers are compensated for funding. So that, that could change this moving forward, but as it is right now, from, I think from West Elgin's perspective, Lee, you can, you can comment that it seems to work very well. And I think that our West Elgin looks after the county roads very efficiently for the county of Elgin.
Yeah, I, I'll agree with that, Mr. Mayor. I think that we have a good relationship with the county and on this and it's worked well in the past. And like I said, if you, if you budget, you know, if you budget for it, I think the key here, like you said, is keeping good records and keeping track of exactly where those dollars are spent. So you have that idea from year to year and putting that money, if you have a year that you have a little bit left over at the end of the year, putting that aside for those years. Obviously, with the county budget, winter maintenance is a big portion of that and it, and it's the big unknown every year. So if you have a good year, meaning lack of snow, chances are you're gonna have some money to put into reserves, but for that bad year when we have a lot of snow, the money is there that's available to use.
If I could just clarify, we do have a reserve fund for, for county, separate from roads, do we?
Yes, correct.
I'm just trying to find it on our reserves, Magna, but I can't see it.
Meg, I, I put up the reserves. If you want to tell her where, tell us where it is.
Um, Bonnie, it's on, if you look under account number 13,303.
Yes.
Placement General and County.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Okay, any more questions on county roads for Lee? Okay, next slide, Service Ontario. I guess you'll be doing that, Magna?
Yes, so Service Ontario, 2021 budget was determined to best of my knowledge, as you know, we changed our operating hours from five days a week to two and a half a day a week. At this point, as of January 1st, Service Ontario is closed. And right at this point, we don't know when we're gonna reopen. However, the wages and payroll benefits have been determined based on two and a half days and 52 weeks of the year. The rest is pretty self-explanatory. The bottom line with the potential savings, so we're cutting our net deficit in more than half.
Okay, any questions regarding Service Ontario?
Sir, Council Cameron has her hand up.
Yes. Chair, I thought we weren't going through the budget line by line by line this year.
We're not, we're going, we're going through section by section and if council has any specific questions regarding anything in that section, they can.
I thought that's what we discussed at the last budget meeting, that we had the opportunity to be offline to speak with Magna and have our questions answered.
Well, unfortunately, if, if there's any.
Of my conversation with Mr. Jor offline.
Well, certainly, I think for your own satisfaction, but as we found so far this morning, there has been a number of issues that have come up that require, I think, all council's participation. So we are, we are moving through them fairly quickly.
Councilier has her hand raised as well.
Yep, okay, dress.
Through the chair, not a big thing, but I'm wondering about boot and clothing allowance. I'm only ever aware of like roads crews and such doing a boot and clothing allowance because they have to have certain boots and they have to have, obviously, even our building official would have to have, you know, the visibility shirts and vests and stuff. So I just wondered, is it common practice that the office staff get a boot and clothing allowance as well? I just see it's always on here, so I'm just asking about that.
Well, it's not a common practice. With this right now, it's, it is in our policy to provide our employees with safety boots and clothing related to their job. As for the office staff in the past, and it is supported by our HR policy, office staff has always received clothing allowance and shoe allowance. But it's up to council. If the council feels that it should be eliminated, perhaps now is the time to go through it.
I think originally, it was an equity thing that much same as the turkeys for the firemen. If you're a, if you're an employee of West Elgin, whether you work in the office, whether you work in the back shop or what department that you actually take part in, that it was an equity thing that we do, we do strive to treat all employees equally.
Yeah, I just hadn't seen it before for office staff. So it was just my question and that, but yeah, it's a, it's just something I had a quick question and thank you for indulging me.
It's, it's, it's been there for many, many years and I believe that's why it was put there originally.
Just if I could comment on that item, and I, I recall discussing this other years, I have never worked in an office setting where I had a clothing allowance. So I would say that that is not what I would consider best practice. However, you're correct in saying that it's been there for a number of years. I would certainly consider, since this is a year when we're trying to trim our budget as much as possible, in having a look at other municipalities, potentially other businesses that are nonprofits and see where we sit with that particular item.
I can tell you that I do know for sure Southwest Middlesex, and I believe that and Dunwich also, their office staff get the same allotment as they're outside or close to what their back outside people do, but we can do more research into it.
Okay.
I was also just thinking maybe like during COVID, people are at home. I know I haven't bought hardly any clothes and no shoes for 10 months or whatever. So, but if it's in their contract, then that makes sense. But yeah, it was just something as Councilor Rose said, we've talked about before and equity is fine, but yeah, I've never heard of office staff having a boot and clothing allowance before. So that's just the only reason I brought it up.
Okay, how, how do you want to leave this? Do you want Janet to do a bit of investigating so you can what other practices are?
That's on my end.
Why don't we do that, Janet, when new?
To speak.
Richard? Richard, do you have a question, Richard?
You're muted, Richard.
Yeah, he's muted and I'm having a hard time unmuting him.
Mr. Mayor, I should mention boot and clothing allowance, usually that payment to our employees gets processed in January. And they, if, if council is looking for additional savings, unfortunately, that payment has already been processed for our employees. But going forward, if the council thinks that this should be eliminated, then we can make that change as of 2022.
Through, through the chair, I think I've worked at it, I'm unmuted now. Can you hear me? Um, I, I just know that boot and clothing allowance has been on there since I've been on council 10 years. So it's not something new that's been put on. It's something that's, as far as I'm concerned, it's been there for 10 years anyway.
Councilor Talia has her hand raised.
Yes, dress.
Through the chair, just speaking to what Magna just was saying, I just remember in December, we saw the checks. And when we approved the monies in December for the staff to get that allowance. So is it December or January? I'm confused.
It is, it was always in January. Unfortunately, last year with COVID and, and the things, I totally forgot to process that money for our employees. And so they were well aware of, of the payment going to them, but it was, it was very late and very unusual.
Council Cameron has their hand raised.
Go ahead, Angela.
I've worked in several different corporate environments and I have received clothing allowances in the past. So while it may not be perhaps standard business practice, as Councilor Row said, I do know that I have received it in the past. I've also received a boot and clothing allowance from even small businesses when I was required to have safety gear. So if this is a policy that's been in place for, as Richard said, well over 10 years, I really don't think that it's something, you know, we're not unionized and, and we need to keep that in mind when we make decisions that affect our employees. So I think at this point, I'm not in favor of removing it.
Okay, well, are we satisfied to move on? There's no more discussion on it. Can we go to the next slide, please?
And the slide is. Our next slide is for counties transit. As you can see, we are very lucky, we're getting additional grant. It's called Safe Restart Phase Two, in the amount of $33,544. We're not anticipating a lot of revenue from bus trip fees or special trips. It is going to be similar to what we had last year. And at this point, we only have one bus driver. We have, so we're budgeting approximately 20 hours per week for the next 50, for 52 weeks. We are planning on running the bus without any interruptions, or as you recall, last year, we, we stopped the transit for four months. This year, with the amount of funding we have received, it wouldn't be wise to cancel the services to our residents. I just noticed one discrepancy, and I reported to the board $2,000 in legal fees. On my spreadsheet, there is $3,000. I will change that number and to $2,000 and adjust transfers to reserves. So I'm consistent with what I have reported to the board.
Any questions on four counties? Seeing none. Just, just a question at this point in time, Truss, did you mention you had another meeting at 2:30?
I do, but it's, it's okay, I'll just text the lady and let her know we can move it to a different time.
Okay, because, as I was going to say, I don't know how much time we have left, or how much we have left to cover. It's been a long day so far. If, if council wants to call it a day now, I don't know if that throws Maida into a, into a situation she doesn't want to be in, but it's up to council to their pleasure. If you want to keep going, we'll keep going, and if not, yes, Bonnie.
Similar to Councilor Cameron, I have had most of my questions answered already by way of emails, so I'm fine if we, if there are highlights that we've, we need to address, but otherwise, I've already had my answers given.
We don't have much longer, half hour at the most.
What was that, Maida?
I said we don't have much longer, half hour at the most.
Okay.
So thanks.
Everybody good with a half an hour? Okay, let's, 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 let's finish up this last little bit. I think a lot of them will go very quickly. Next item up is streetlights, I believe.
Yep, so streetlights, pretty standard there. The only thing you'll see, there's, there's capital money in this year, there was a few places that were identified, such as Douglas Line, that we're going to add some street lighting, so that's what that capital expenditure there is for. Otherwise, it's just hydro and repairs.
Any questions? Seeing none, moving on to sidewalks.
Um, sidewalks, there again, straightforward. We did make note in the capital portion that the capital sidewalk replacement this year is slated for West Lauren, Graham Road South and Marsh Line.
Questions? Hearing none? Rodney Swords, next item. Maida.
No, we're projecting, we're budgeting no increases to our sewer rates. Grant funding is included in our budget. And plus the operating expenses. Oh, the overall increase for water and sewage is 3.2%.
Okay, that answers a previous question. Any other questions on Rodney Swords? I think we've.
Bonnie has a question, sir.
So if we're not anticipating any increase, why is on the little note there at the bottom, from 2020 to 2021, a different rate?
The reason for it is because sewer rate rates are calculated based on water rates, and it's the percentage, so sewer rates are 171% of water rate.
Both the flat, flat charge as well as the sewer charge?
Yes, 171% on top of that. And West Lauren is 164%.
So I don't know that it's fair to say that we're not increasing it.
But normally, we would increase if we went with proposed sewage study that we had done by Aqua. You would have noticed that, that 171% would have changed to 180% of, of water bill. Now, basically, the customers that are only on water, they will be noticing 3.2% increase. The ones that are on water and sewage, they're, they'll be facing the same increase of 3.2% overall.
I understand.
Through the Chair, I don't understand. I'm still confused. So it's a 3.2 increase? Yeah, I don't understand what's going on with that.
Okay, can we go back to my presentation that I had, the utility bill calculation? It, yeah.
Or you can just explain it to me offline, and if I'm the only one that's not catching it.
Keep going. The other way, Jana. No, keep going. Was just before. Oh, you missed it. 18, number 18. Slide 18.
Just explain it to me offline, then, just.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought I understood when we first discussed it with that slide, and then when you're talking now, it's, yeah, I'm missing something. So yeah, we'll discuss it offline if that's okay with everyone else.
Okay, does anybody else need further explanation? On this? No, okay. Okay, and so West Lawn Sewer, Rodney, with the only exception that the refurbishment, sewage refurbishment is now complete. There are few outstanding items still in our budget for this year, so our capital budget includes the critical items that have been outlined by R.V. Anderson. Anticipating any future grants at this point.
Questions regarding this?
I don't see any, sir.
Okay.
So the next one is water. I'm going to share this one with Lee. I'll go quickly through revenues, and Lee will go through operating expenses. So water revenue consists of the increase, proposed increase in water rates and flat rates, that's 3.2% increase. Besides that, there's, we're budgeting as usual. This reconnects revenue fees and for new water services as well.
So through the expenses there, we've budgeted pretty much the same as usual. There's really a couple of those accounts, such as materials, we've just really designated what is to be in that account. We, so we've reallocated a few of the parts that we would typically buy to other accounts just to make it more transparent, but other than that, under contracts and agreements there, you'll see $10,000 as a desktop assessment, so what that is, that's our portion, Maida, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is for the assessment of the agreement with Southwest Middlesex for water on, for water on BD line, which feeds the nursing home. So there will be a, there's a consultant that's going to be hired that's going to look at what, what that water is worth, once it goes through Southwest Middlesex's infrastructure and comes back into West Elgin to feed those properties on BD line. And then the next page, Jana, really there, everything else is pretty, is pretty standard budgeted against last year. And the capital, we've already discussed. Is there any questions?
Just looking at the water revenue residential from the actual $888,000 last year to $1,049,000 this year. Is that a result of the, what we call the small water increase?
No, no, please keep in mind that 2020 actuals, we don't have, so billing, December billing is not included in 2020 actuals. That unbilled revenue will be processed next week, I believe, once we get the actual read. So 2020 actuals are understated at this point.
Okay, but I'm kind of going back even to the 2020 budget of $846,000 now to a budget of $1,049,000 for 2021. That's what, 10% jump in revenue, is that because of additional water use, or what are the factors behind that increase in the projected budget revenues?
Well, so basically, what I've done, I took the 2020 actuals year to date, and I added another $95,000 for water use, and then flat rate $66,000. That's how I kind of came up with 2021 budget.
So when you look at the 2020 budget of revenue, we were a lot bigger, the actuals are going to be a lot bigger than the budget, and you've kind of mirrored the 21 budget to the finalized 2020 budget.
Mr. Mayor, it is, at this point, it is very difficult to budget water and sewage as both the flat rate and, and consumption rate is going into one account. We're in the process of separating two transaction codes, so this can be better reflected in our budget.
Okay. Any other questions on water? All right, next up, landfill.
Yeah, so through the Chair, no big surprises there, other than, well, it's not really surprise, we've brought the garbage and recycling from Rodney, West Lauren, obviously is under the umbrella of landfill this year, so that's where you see the garbage collection and recycling collection amounts are the two big ones, the two big variances or differences from last year. We also, there will be less work, obviously, for our staff at the landfill now, so those costs are going to go down, but the Green Lane disposal cost is going to be higher this year. We estimate $80,000, estimate $80,000 for tipping fees for that material that's leaving West Elgin and going to Green Lane.
Questions on landfill? It's kind of a new accounting procedure here that's going to take, take a year or so to get a, a normal trend of what's going on. Seeing no questions, next item up is our our arena. Another odd year.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it was an interesting budget to prepare, obviously, we have to look at what we would consider a normal year or something close to, but obviously, as we know, depending on what the province decides here in the next five or six days, this is going to change this budget dramatically, so we did plan for somewhat of a similar year here, as far as things like hydro, gas, utilities, all the expenses that it would take to operate the arena, including staff time, wages for normal year, hopefully, even if we do shut down in the short term, that things are in a position that we can open back up and be ready for September, so I don't know if anybody has any questions with regards to that.
Again, it's a crystal ball thing, and we'll know more in a few days.
Councilor Cameron, it looked like she might have had a hand up, sir?
No, I have a furry visitor that pushed my office door open, sorry.
That's not nice to call Dave that.
Okay. Parks Unwrecked.
Marina here, so you'll see, you'll notice that blue flag has been removed as well as the membership and dues. If you remember, that's the Todd signage that was along Highway 401 that we've canceled. Other than that, pretty standard for operating expenses and the capital items that we've already discussed.
Okay, any questions, or?
Councilor Rose has a question, sir.
Hey, Bonnie.
Oh, I'm just looking at the sewage expense, and I see that it's less than last year, which I anticipate is because of the washrooms being closed perhaps, but I just wondered if there would be a potential for a higher rate, or higher sewage with the fish cleaning station in, in use and having to pump that tank.
I don't, I would say that we shouldn't include the fish cleaning station under the sewage expense. The, it was, the sewage expense was quite high last year. Obviously, we had the issues with the ultraviolet light that's used in that system quit, and they didn't make that light anymore, so instead of just replacing the bulb, we had to replace the whole unit, so that's what drove the 20 actuals, 2020 actuals. So that's what drove the 20 actuals, 2020 actuals up. So we're expecting a more normal year for sewage. I think moving forward on with the fish cleaning station probably is in our best interest to have a, an operating line, expense line under this section of budget that's dedicated solely to the fish cleaning station.
Okay, thank you.
I see, Lee, there's no, no capital consideration in for the discussions. I was head with the yacht club regarding a flood overflow.
Yeah. We've, I have that. I believe I had that budgeted for into their, under the grounds maintenance. Magna, can you help me out? We did discuss this.
Yes, it's included under ground maintenance.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. And we've been working with lower temps to make sure we have the necessary permits to receive the concrete from the Rodney Construction Reconstruction.
Yes, yes.
And that grounds maintenance through the chair, it also includes the a gravel in the parking lot, does it?
Correct. Okay, any more questions on Marina? Okay. Programming for the.
So programming there again, that's the crystal ball where we're at with COVID this year, but we did allow, we did a lot money in for those different programs in case we are out of, in a position that we're able to run. So we, we, we budgeted for, we'll call it somewhat of a normal year.
Any questions on parks and recreation program?
Through the chair. So that's where you allotted the 10,000 towards the Rodney Fair, correct?
Correct.
That would be for the things that we are required under our agreement to provide them.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that would be for the lights, bleachers, washrooms, the things that, that we've already committed to.
Nothing to do with their grant.
Out of that 10 grand.
Yeah, those, that granted amounts, Richard, was for on top of. Those were new requests on top of what we already had committed to that agreement with them.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Cameron has her hand raised, sir.
Yes, Angela.
We just transferred in, Magna, is that the summer students wages or? No, okay.
It's, summer students wages are included in it, but it's based the entire parks and recreation department wages.
So has there been any consideration that if we remain under the current COVID restrictions of not hiring summer students or will they be required for grounds maintenance? Or can we do it with the existing rec staff that we have?
That would be the question for Lee.
I would say to that, that even if we can't provide this programming, which we didn't last year, I, I believe there is still a need for the summer students in those departments for grounds maintenance, the washroom, the extra cleanings that we're doing, washrooms at the marina, et cetera. You know, obviously we'll have to look at that closer as the time comes. But we did make good use of those students last summer under the same conditions.
Any more questions on that? If not, we'll move on to parks and recreation, Recreation Center.
Yep, Your Honor, so Recreation Center there, I think just the one note I will make is the, you'll see 15,000 budgeted under building repairs. We did make a note there. There is a leak in the flat roof over the front part of the kitchen, where the kitchen and the, and the meeting room area, we're going to address that. And there's an issue at the east end of the building with people getting, gaining access to the roof area and causing troubles with the HVAC systems at the east end of the rec center. So we're going to try and address that through that account as well.
Any other questions? I'm just looking in the capital schedule for chairs for $10,000. I'm wondering, is this something that we're looking for money to move around a little bit? Chairs this year, we're, we're going to be lucky if we can get any bums to sit in them anyway. Is that something that we can put on?
If, if council so desired, that would be one thing that I would recommend or say that you could look at. I think that could be pushed off a year.
What's council thoughts on that?
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, through the chair, it makes sense to me. I think maybe it's something we don't really need at this time. We don't even know what we're going to be able to do in the building.
Okay, consensus to remove the capital expenditure for 2021?
I agree.
I agree.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay, what's our next item here? Cool, I think we've discussed that.
Let's skip over that, Jana.
Operations.
Yeah, operations is a pretty straightforward budgeted. You know, we, we have those same requirements from one year to the next. So this, this one hasn't changed much over 2020 budget.
Any other questions?
Through the chair, a question about Joe's bush.
Oh.
So it's at $5,000 right now. Is that just for the tree trimming and such? Are we just at a point we need to do a lot of that right now? Or what's, what's the, the jump a little bit with the money?
So the $5,000 is put, been put in there. So the Kiwanis Club was there last week and did a cleanup of the trails. What is, is safe for them to remove? There are a few trees that we have identified in the bush that need more specialized training to deal with. So that $5,000 will, is in there to help look after that cost.
Counselor, has a question as well.
Yeah, through the chair. What is the $20,000 under the scout hall for?
So I, do you want to get into this right now, Magna? The explanation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So back at the beginning of January, or sorry, I guess at the end of last year, we received a call from the scouts that they were looking at more or less ceasing operations in West Lorne. They only had enough money to get them through to the end of the year with their, they currently pay for utilities at that building, but that they were going to be completely done. So we look, we looked at ways or we looked at ideas for repurposing that building. And one of the ideas that we came up with was out of necessity for someplace to have council meetings moving forward. Obviously, nobody enjoys being at the rec center and the sound and the temperatures. So we looked at possibly going to the meeting room at the complex in West Lorne for council was an idea. If we do that and if council chambers are set up on a more permanent basis with the electronics that we are proposing to purchase for council meetings, that would displace the groups that are currently using that meeting room at the complex, which there are approximately five groups that use it on a fairly regular basis when we're not in COVID. So the idea was to make that scout hall a place where those groups could meet, repurpose that. And so that was originally what we had looked at. Now, just in the last couple of weeks or three weeks, I've been in consultations with scouts. They, right now they're deemed inactive, but they're hoping to start up again once COVID is over. But in speaking with them, we feel that we can use that scout hall not only to house scouts, which is only four to five hours of time a week, but still use it for what we had considered about putting those other groups for their meeting space there, which frees up the meeting room at the West Lorne complex for council when we are in a position where council meetings can be held in a place that would facilitate that. So that $20,000 that's there under the scout hall would be to basically upgrade that facility to a point where those other groups could also make use of the, of the building. We could, we would get more use out of that building. And, and in speaking with scout leaders, they're on board with the idea. We're just waiting right now until we have, until we are at a point where we can actually meet with them onsite and, and review our plans with them.
And if I could just provide additional information, that $20,000 is, so we're budgeting approximately $7,500 for utilities to cover gas, hydro and water. And we're budgeting 12, 12 and a half thousand dollars for renovations.
Counselor Cameron, your hand up.
Let's go ahead, Angela.
Is the scout hall wheelchair accessible and doesn't have a wheelchair accessible bathroom?
That was, that is part of the renovations. That is part of the plan for renovations.
And would there be storage for the current agent groups that use that closet to store their stuff?
Yeah, there would, I wouldn't, there will be room. I wouldn't say, I don't know how much stuff is in the current closets in the complex. But you know, there will be room and I think we can make that, we can make those, we can make those arrangements to have those accommodations.
Okay.
I think this is maybe certainly timely because we are going to be out of a home for our council meetings. And certainly, this is a little bit of forward thinking that's going to be, you know, initiated, that's going to give council some room to maneuver as we, as we go through 2021. And you know, at some point in time, we'll be coming out of this COVID lockdown, I hope. This is certainly getting a bit of a plan underway to accommodate us when it comes time that we have to make some decisions. Any other questions on that? Okay.
Yes, through the chair, sorry, I had my hand up, I guess I got missed. So through the chair, Lee, we'd be all wired up for a future. If we ever wanted to have meetings virtually or broadcast, I guess is the word I'm looking for.
Yes, you're correct, Counselor Tully. We have, that, that's, that was our thinking about taking council to the complexes that we've run, we, we do have municipal internet in that front meeting room now at the complex. So we can have that set up. I think once you, once you set up a council, or once we set up for council with all of that electronic equipment, that's not something that we're going to be putting up and taking down all the time. So we felt that room would be a good spot to be able to have that set up and have it left set up with all that equipment.
It's actually cheaper to, to cost it out, to have it set up where we can move the microphones and stuff, but not necessarily the cameras. Because in order for us to not have a person dedicated to controlling it, everybody has to be in the same spot every time. I have to pre-program the buttons or it, unfortunately, Magda Lee and I become directors and try to be camera operators and directors at the same time.
We, we felt the complex, like I said, I, I think we can all agree that it's not an ideal situation with council in the large room at the complex. So, or at the recreation center. So we felt the complex in West Lorne might be, was certainly an option that we should explore further.
That's a great option, parking, everything's there. Yeah, it's a great option. Thanks for everybody getting, thinking on that one, but I guess we'll discuss it later more in a council meeting.
Counselor Cameron has her hand up.
Yes, Angela.
One final question, so can the improvements to the scout hall be put under efficiency since we're having to repurpose the hall in order to make new council chambers? It's just my thought process on that.
I, I purposely would, would lean towards saying that those upgrades to that building would be considered efficiency.
Well, why don't we leave that in Magna and Lee's jurisdiction to look at it? And they can come back at our next meeting with some further recommendations on it. But certainly, I think staff have done a good job here of, of looking for a solution to a problem that's, we're going to have down the road. And this certainly is one that I think we'll be, we'll be looking into and talking more about as we move forward. Everybody happy with Parks and Recreation operations? Seeing none, Park Glasgow Trailer Park.
Yes, with the Park Glasgow Trailer Park, you'll see there is an increase this year with the seasonal fees, obviously due to the, obviously due to the rate increase or the seasonal fee increase. That will be the, that'll be the big note under the revenue side for this year. As far as on the expense side, we have added, you'll see under the fees and charges by law for this year, we, the administration expense has gone to 10,000 from 2000. Grounds maintenance has doubled this year. There are, there is a fair bit of tree work to be done in the park. So we've allocated additional funds for that. And then with the equipment purchase, the majority of that is laundry equipment, so washing machines and dryers.
Any questions?
I don't see any, sir.
Okay, again, a lot of this is pending what COVID does or doesn't do to us. But I would assume this will be one of the most scrutinized budgets that we have on our desk. Rodney Library, pretty straightforward. Magna, anything you want to add?
Nothing out of extraordinary. The revenue under, from, for Rodney Library comes from the county. As you can see, every year, we finish the year with a little bit of surplus. Same with West Lorne. The revenue for the library is coming from the county. And then West Elgin Support Services pays us one third of total operating costs. So again, both buildings pay for themselves. We have from West Lorne complex, we're estimating $4,700 in surplus. We went through planning and so the last one is economic development. Oh, and drains, we still have drains. So economic development, I Oh, and drains, we still have drains. So economic development, I only budgeted $1,000 for advertising. And drains. In that maintenance drain inspector comes from OMAFRA. Every year, by the end of January, we have to apply. The administration fee revenue, this is something new that we started in 2020. So basically, every time once the drain is completed and all the expenses are allocated among all property owners involved. If if there is a minimal allocation charge of $5, we are charging each property owner, I believe it's $30 of min fee as it is costing us to administer those drains. And that covered the cost of postage and all the administrative costs associated with it. Wages, it's for part-time drain superintendent with benefits. Very similar to previous year. Any question on drains?
Wow, hearing none, seeing none.
And so the last one is debentures. So basically, this is the amount of money we pay either to OMAFRA or West Algen Mutual. And so that amount is going out. But we collect that money taxation and it's, it it shows under local improvements on your summary sheet. So then that effect is zero to the municipality. And that's the end of 2021 budget deliberations.
All right, everyone. Been kind of a long session, but I think, I think it's very important that we all have a good understanding of where we're spending the taxpayers' money. And I know this exercise is somewhat painful. Thankfully, it, we only do one budget a year. But I'm for now, from my perspective, Mayor, I'm very impressed with all you and your your insight into doing the level best to look after the taxpayers of West Alken. So if there isn't any other questions or anybody has any final comments so regarding next segment of the budget, now's your opportunity to speak up or we will ask for a recommendation to the West Alken Committee of the Hall hereby adjourn at 3:03 PM to meet again on at 9:30 on February 11, 2021 at Council and 9:30 on February 18, 21 as Committee of the Hall or at the call of the Chair. Do I have a moment or second or for that? Moved by Cameron, seconded by Leitham. Any more discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you all very much and we'll see you in a week. Bye bye.